Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the city council meeting dated February 3rd, 2016. We would like to invite everybody to the day of our pastor's fall round, Mont Olive Baptist Church. Followed by, followed by the family.
And before we pray, I'd like to say something very briefly. This week, I lost my best friend. And I want to say, when you go home tonight, make sure you kiss and hug all those children, those loved ones that you had. If there's a problem, a breach of communication, or a breach of relationship, be the one to extend that out of grace. Because life is so short. And there's no way you could have told me that I would be getting ready for Jesus' funeral ceremony. You know, I don't have a blood brother, but he is the closest thing that, a brother for me. And so I can say that to you, make sure you let your loved ones know who you love. Let us pray. First, gracious in the true Father, we do thank you for this day, we honor you, for this is the day that you were made, and we will rejoice and laud in it. And God, as we gather in this room today to conduct this mess, I pray that you will give our leaders business, give them understanding. And Father, that you would just speak their hearts, so that the decisions that are made here will be beneficial for all of us, not just one segment, but that everyone will be blessed. And Lord, we just pray now that your presence will continue to be upon this city. Thank you, God, that storms have passed by and have torn up other places, but God, your mercy and your grace allow us to be spared. And God, we just want to say thank you. So Father, as we, again, as we gather here, we give you all the glory. Bless this gathering in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Good evening, we are the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Martin, I would like to make a motion to defer item number two
Okay, sir?
I'd like to defer item number two on the Republican area land use, three thoming position number fifteen oh four, Larry Black's engagement, to attend the three thoming thirty one thirty, Karen E. Rose, Lamar N. Schmatt, for March sixteenth, twenty sixteen.
Second. And what's the status of your defer, item number two on the Republican area land use? There's a discussion, being none of those big relationships right now. All right, I'm going to carry it down. Thank you so much. Uh, we'll begin with our agenda, uh, and, uh, if you see anybody out here, see if there's a big crowd. Uh, first of all, our agenda is our public comment here, uh, and, uh, our first speaker is Mr. Dennis Britton. Please step forward, name, address, and, uh, let's know your concerns.
Good evening, you are on the well-commissioned address. Um, I get very nervous, wanting to stand before either the Glen County Commission or the City Commission, so I have people to meet on this day. But I would first like to hand back, which is allowed, and joyous, from which it's allowed, brothers of Greenwood Cemetery that I took on Monday. The first three are crucial to the state of the cemetery. And I would please ask you to just glance at those first three brothers. Okay, my name is Janice Gray. I live at four one three Wall Street in the city of Brunswick. I bought the home in two thousand fourteen. I've done shotguns, power lines, building a cement, um, I'm not sure if Mr. Bates has seen it. I've done sixty thousand dollars for restoration work to it. Um, I'm very nervous, um, so what I want to say is I was appointed to the Brunswick Historic Preservation Board by Philly Martin, thank you very much, I was the honorary servant on that board, in two thousand and thirteen, by a joint resolution of the Glen County Commission and the city of Brunswick, based that was the Coastal African American Historic Preservation Commission, whose funding mechanism is the Black Historic Preservation Foundation, which I wrote the Bible on C three four for Commissioner Booker, and as the Secretary of Treasurer for two years, and the liaison between the two entities for approximately a year. One of our first projects that was suggested was the restoration of Greenwood Cemetery, which we were advised was maintained by the city of Brunswick Public Works Department, in my humble opinion, and as the pictures handed to you will indicate otherwise. To me, we are stewards of our cultural African American heritage, which we are honored to have in the city of Brunswick, three cemeteries, Greenwood, O'Brooke, Apomino. These are sacred places of sorrow, reverence, respect. They are outdoor garden museums that display historic fragile artifacts of our rich American African cultural, especially Greenwood Cemetery. In turn, in Greenwood are descendants from the last slave ship that landed in the United States, the Wanderer, as you all are aware, on general, in unmarked graves. Plus, Lee Louis Broxdale, Michael Lee Burnus, who I both attended Sullivan Industrial and Normal School before post in nineteen thirty-three, whose pictures I've provided also in the background. As Commissioner Booker could contest to, I have spent numerous hours of research on the descendants of not only the wanderers, but our modern plantation slaves, and those that built the Alton Hall Canal, some resting in Greenwood, in unmarked graves. Um, so you saw the pictures. I don't wish to appear anti-tourism. I, um, very, we can't even know to be better than you, but I've been Secretary Treasurer of the Glen County Airports Tenants Association for the last six years. Uh, as, as I said, duly appointed to the Brunswick Historic Preservation Board. I am an acting treasurer of the Friends of Glen Animals, and I am now doing, for the third time, night by night pay to benefits of Glen County Middle School Athletic, uh, Glen County Athletic School Department. I am also, as the Secretary Treasurer of the Glen Historic Foundation, for two years. I was the liaison, fundraiser between them and the Coastal African American Historic Preservation Commission. I was the event coordinator for the huge thing where we dropped the parachutes with the church doors at the municipal, the night by night pay, two thousand fourteen. I was a board member of Glen County, of Glen County Community Crisis Senator Committee House, and a head chair at Chase of Glen, twenty twelve, twenty fifteen. I am all for bringing tourism into this county and raising dollars, for there are charities that are needed. I, the, the person that I wish to speak out about is Bernard Pong the third. Uh, I firstly spoke to him on February, um, January twenty ninth, at Boyd's Transmission at one thirty-two p.m., and he also called me on that call to Saturday at one fifty-three, proposing these tours that will be registered as historic old town tours. His business is registered at three one two p.m., E Norwood Street, which is occupied by Boyd's Transmission, so there's no real office there. He stated to me that he currently had no liability in place at this point for the old historic, old town historic tours, that he had no contract with the city of Brunswick. They had no vouchers as Oak Grove Cemetery House, which is the five oh one C three. He told me that he had paid money to the city of Brunswick for last ride ghost tours to due city hall. However, I verified through open record requests to Lynn Daly, Assistant Director, Assistant Finance Director, City of Brunswick, that no such remuneration has ever been received. And Owen's record request also provided me a verification by our esteemed Kathy Mills that we do not require proof of liability insurance. So when last ride ghost tours is here in city hall, if they haul down the stairs or gorgeous staircase, the liability falls on the city of Brunswick. That is a huge liability that we are not willing to take. Um, he says he does not approve of alcohol yet. On, on January thirty first, two thousand fourteen, last ride ghost tours provided a complimentary glass of wine after the tour at Box's Pizza. But since he picks up at Box's Pizza, his clients, please take into consideration that are possibly their potential clients there inviting before these tours. Um, current city ordinance section sixteen point eight-two regulating the use of public spaces within the city of Brunswick, comprised of patients. And ordinance sixteen eighty-five J requires permits, but I will defer to the city manager, Jim Drum, who I had many conversations about this, and our assistant attorney, Brian Corey, um, their knowledge on the ordinances. In closing, on behalf of the city's ethnic cultural cemeteries, I appeal to your steam judgment not to let further, I'm sorry, I can't read, further desecration of these hollowed grounds, especially in Greenwood, where there are unmarked graves with the orange lights that you saw, that we are still researching, are having extensive research. Greenwood needs to be maintained with the full dignity it belongs deserves. And that means like Oak Grove Cemetery, that we have a form of five oh one C three, which I wrote for the Brunswick Historical Preservation Foundation. I am willing to do that. I believe so strongly in our African American, I'm sorry, emotional, I feel so strongly in the descendants that are buried in that cemetery that I do not believe that we should allow tours from that cemetery at this time. Thank you very much for the consideration.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Great. Our next speaker is Mr. Bonnie Roberts. Please step forward, leave your name and your address, please.
Good evening, my name is Bonnie Roberts. I live at two thirty-six Circle Drive, eight times aisle. And although I'm on a familiar ground here, again, seeing tonight, it feels, uh, feels a bit new to me to speak from the other side here as a citizen and as a property owner. I come here tonight on behalf of the Roberts family. Don Roberts, my late husband, rests in Oak Grove Cemetery. And he rests there with his grandfather, his great-grandfather, and his great-great-grandfather, and their families, his parents rest in Glen Calhoun Cemetery. And so I speak on behalf of six generations of the Roberts, including Don's children, when I ask you not to allow commercial for-profit use of our city cemeteries, and particularly those tours are commercial advertisements. Um, as was said, cemeteries to us are hardly sacred places. We go there to pray, uh, look after the souls of those departed. We go to bury somebody. We not only pray for their souls, but we pray for the families to be looked after and looked up and protected. And so I think, I feel we have an obligation to protect those places where those people rest, our friends and friends, in, in all three cemeteries. Um, our family history deeply is disrespectful, is an inappropriate, unintended use of these grounds. Um, we go there to resident and have glad reflection. And while tourism can be a good thing, I think if this is something the collective community wants to pursue, I would ask that we do it in a more rational manner, and develop some policies to provide some responsibility for that. I know that you all work very hard to balance the interests of public and private interests in this community. I've seen you labor over decisions about whether to allow certain signs, certain variances, and I know that you guys are business friendly. And in this case, I would ask you to consider the benefit versus the cost that may come to us if we, if we open these cemeteries to for-profit use. In Oak Grove particularly, there's a non-profit organization that exists now, and that group will conduct historic tours. And proceeds, donations for most tours go back to the maintenance of the cemetery. And if that is a group we want to pursue, then I would suggest that perhaps we do that in all these cemeteries, but to allow those proceeds to go back to the city, back into the maintenance of the cemetery, instead of into a private property. And so I, I hope that my speaking to you here tonight gives you some information as you make this decision. My purpose here is not to allow anybody making any requests, a request before you and I, although I've not seen it, it may be perfectly reverent, respectful, but it opens the door to other things, and we're in this control over these kinds of things. When I was still working for the city of Brunswick, I took the call from Savannah, who wanted to make it commercial in one of our cemeteries. Um, I presumed that he was not allowed to do that, so it wasn't appearing to be. Now, although we didn't have a policy upon which to base that decision, staff conferred and recommended to him that it was not appropriate use, and that we wish you wouldn't do that, we didn't pursue it any further. But as we can see, there were other requests and other issues that we can't, I think, even plan for or think about. I know we certainly one of those, and we, we as cities require that private vendors provide their own liability for certain instances. There are so many unwanted consequences that I just believe that we need to approach this in a more methodic fashion, and I would be happy to assist in, um, any of those efforts. So in closing, as I say, I come to you on behalf of the Roberts family, six generations, I once stepped over. Um, your father was a very quiet man, a very low-key man. He was one of the top peak surgeons in this community. Left his home, went to study other places, and came back. And you know, we don't see that very often anymore. And so I'd like to do what I can to help keep this memory, and hit a good one. And as a matter of fact, our family wants to donate first memorial event in Oak Grove Cemetery, and I thank you for your kind consideration. And if I can do anything on a voluntary basis, I hope this is helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Thank you, Ms. Britton, also for the comments. Um, sit perfect, anyone sign up? Yes? Okay, all right. Uh, moving right along. First of all, I also want to recognize a voice that, truth that's here. Uh, you all stand, please. Thank you so much. Okay, uh, our first item on the appeal of historic preservation, number one, Joe McDonough, owner of thirteen fifteen Union Street, applying, excuse me, appealing to the city of historic preservation board, denied application for certificate of openness of property located at thirteen fifteen Union Street. Uh, Ms. Luce is presenting, uh, here. Oh, stop, sorry, my bad.
I was on the air.
Are you, are you, this is, uh, for?
Is it according to order of angels or?
Yeah.
First off, Commissioner Harris, I hope I can change you.
I think you can.
Sorry, I turned in my scooter, and we can have races later. I will give you advice, watch out for the race halls, car pens, because you will, you will go over it, like you're on a tube cage. Um, I'm here to talk to you, um, about our decision on the Winter Shriver House at thirteen fifteen Union Street. I wanted to give you a little bit of a background about the house, and some of our research. The house was, um, built in the late eighteen hundreds, as best as we can tell. Didn't show up on the sandmore maps until nineteen eighty-eight. At that time, the Winter family resided in the home. TF Winter was a tailor, a tailor shop now, almost built over more than twenty-five years. The home stayed in the family until after the Civil War. And then it progressively changed hands a few times, until the Shriver family had it. The Shriver family had a shoe store down in Brunswick, and the name is still on the sidewalk. You see it in front of Lynn's Spring Shop there. Um, and she sold the house, then in the late, or early seventies, rather. Mr. Anderson built the house for, as best we can tell, it could have been his son, Junior. Uh, it was a barber house, modified design from George F. Barber. He did a catalog, designed, he could buy his designs out of a catalog, and built this house as some property. Mr. Anderson was a contractor and also had a lumbering business here. And if you're curious, he was built many of the structures in Brunswick, including the one we're all in. His name is downstairs with Anderson Sharp as the builders of this building. So the hi- the history of this building and its residents is long. Um, I'm going to give you some of the things that Mr. McDonough told us in reading, and I'm not holding him to him because it was by his own memory. Um, purchased the house in nineteen seventy-four. I understand it was a bank sale from where the front engineering firm owned the house. He did some repairs to the front porch of the house in nineteen seventies, and then sold the house in the eighties, nineteen eighty-eight, and apparently ended up getting the house back. In either ninety-two or ninety-three, said that he built a new roof and softness in the house at the cost of about thirty thousand dollars. You may have been in some conversation about tax credits, or if you're sure about that. Sold it again, two thousand and one, and apparently took the property back in two thousand and eleven. And as a two thousand and eleven house was listed for sale, he talked in similar about a hundred and eighty-eight five to a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. The board has determined, or decided to deny his application for permanent request to demolish the house. The house is a historic structure. I hope that I've been able to allude that to you all from its history. The board is responsible for the historic character and fabric of buildings in that district, and this is one of them. Granted, it's not in the best loved shape right now, but there are others. Julie, fantastic, my craziness, put one down the street. There are options available for this house, other than the parrot pen. And I don't have all the answers, so I don't know what that is, which would be, but it's our responsibility as the board to protect those assets. Long as they're this house down, it cannot go down. It has to remain. If we start picking pieces of the property in our historic districts and tearing them down, there's a possibility that we could lose our historic status. And that's not something that we want to do. It's important that we save every asset of our historic districts that we can, and that we have, we just want another one in New Year's Eve, or fire. And that one's been told off, so that we now have another hole. But that's a, you can build a recovery site. I hope that this board will uphold our decisions in denying the request for demolition. This part of this house, um, needs to have some love in it. It needs to have somebody that will embrace it. Part of the argument for demolishing it is the cost of repair. While that is an important part of the process, it is not the total process. There are other avenues, the numbers that have been presented to us, I would probably say to you are legitimate. I might be able to sit there and pick bits and pieces of it, but overall, it's probably a legitimate number. And I come about with a little bit of moniker, but it's spent, a knowledge from my house down on Union Street that I've been trying to work on for the last one and a half years. So I don't think the numbers are wrong. But that's not to say that there's not somebody out there who might be as crazy as I, and might be willing to take it all. I think there's some opportunities with other groups in the city, with the potential owners, potential buyers, of finding another solution other than just tearing it down. I think that's an easy road to take, and it may, and it may not be a financially optimal decision, but it is an easy one. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie Roberts. Scott, uh, any questions for Luce? Question?
There are options are available to property owners of properties in a historic designated historic district.
Well, the biggest thing is with this property, because it's already zoned commercial, the biggest thing is, is that this is part of the process. If my white collar comes through our process, there are available tax credits, tax abatements, and because it's commercial, we use a commercial property, then it also could apply for federal tax credits. So that can make a big difference if somebody wanted to take on this project, and they can get economically viable in order to do so, because there are credits that can come back as a result of that. And that can be huge, especially from, from the tax abatement standpoint, if you get those property taxes frozen. So they sat and clear it out, and then as time goes on, you will be able to maintain that same rate and continue to do the work that you and I have been doing those improvements. And then when it's done, it passes at the rate it was originally appraised at. If you bought it before that got started, lock it in.
Are there any different, um, opportunities available when it's commercialized as a residential?
As far as?
The zoning of a historic structure?
Not really the zoning, it's already in the historic district at this time.
But whether the property is in a zoning commercial site, that's not happening.
See? Not in the federal system. The last property to be in the true commercial district was, um, was around a friend of mine, he was at. It was a tax credit.
Do you have any idea at what point structures on either side of the building would have come down and?
I don't know that history. I know those buildings have been here a long time. Somebody would make the argument to me later that, that house is intrusion, because it's got two commercial properties on both sides. My conclusion would be that it's the two commercial properties are intrusion from three houses that are in blocks, or there's two, two sides of that problem.
Was there a structural assessment though? Because I don't, I didn't see any, I've heard of a structural assessment.
I don't know of anybody from a city standpoint, or engineer from a city standpoint. The board, us, we can go through the house and look at it. Um, I am not an engineer, I'm not in that field, I don't have that expertise, but I, I didn't see anything that would promote me to believe that it's imminent or going to collapse. In two thousand and nine, when the house came before the board for demolition, went from another entity, um, I spoke to one of the children that had two, because they worked on the home, and he assured me that it was solved. But that was two thousand and nine, it's been sitting there, it's trying to stay. It's, the house is unsecured, it's been unsecured since I got found in two thousand and five. Front door in two thousand and five was standing wide open, and I walked in. The windows are unsecured, the boards are put up on the inside of the windows, so the windows are open to vandalists. And you can look at it, and a number of the windows are broken. I suspect that that was done because whoever was putting the windows, they wanted to put ladders up on the outside, you could cover the windows so they just come in on the inside. Doesn't really protect the historic windows at all.
I just had a couple of questions, kind of, feedback on what Ms. Martin said. Um, and we still haven't answered it, that you all did the walk, but has, has an actual assessment been done by the, by the, uh, H U B to determine what the actual value is of the property as it sat, as it sits?
All I can do is look at what the G I S says, does this work?
Because I don't think, he's got the, the empty, the parking, the payers. But what's the value as it sits versus what the cost is?
Value is whatever somebody would give. At this point, he's asking rough, almost two hundred thousand dollars for this last time he got off.
That's any contract worth?
That's what I was, what Mr. McDonald was asking. That he had listed with the board, and a hundred and eighty-eight-five, a hundred and eighty-nine, I wasn't sure exactly what it was.
What's his ultimate value at? So is it around a hundred and eighty-five? Is that happening currently?
Presumably, again, he's just going by him, or he's gone and got a hold of those packs because he was using a lot of trouble today.
Alright, so he, this may not be able to tell us what it costs. Crazy money. It is not what it would be. I'm also formation to turn the whole issue as it sits.
I can draw a couple of conclusions from the fact that if Mr. McDonough wants to tear it down, there is a potential buyer for the lot. So in my eyes, the building actually has a negative value. So I don't know what the potential is for a buyer for the lot, what that value in dollars is going to turn about. But it seems with a house with a negative value, be asking two hundred thousand for closing the door for a house that essentially gives to me a negative value. Maybe we can find a selling price for the structure itself and the land to make it more financially equitable for somebody to then do what they want to do to buy it and something that should or could be.
You can get your, I'm afraid you should be able to look out for the house, or something like that.
And there's some of the houses in addition that could really be removed. And what were those, are we having to pause even further? I'm just, there's a lot of options out there. There's a lot of conversations that can be had. We had a lot of those conversations in two thousand and nine when this came on before. The Baptist Church brought it up for a request for demolition in two thousand and nine. I didn't, they dropped, they didn't pursue it any further.
Did they actually have a different contract then?
I don't remember that. I believe they brought it to Harvard before that. I remember, do you think it's crowded in here now, this room was packed? In two thousand and nine, for the citizens concerned, I got some letters from some of the citizens that were just absolutely shocked.
How active, I know you said that there were some options, you didn't know all of the options. But how active is the board in helping a person that owns these properties to be able to refurbish the properties or to seek, from a board standpoint, and us taking possession and rehappening the house? Just the assistance of finding a potential purchaser, someone who knows that area and does that.
To my knowledge, it's not been something the board done, has done in the past, but it's certainly something that I think we would entertain. I know that other agencies and organizations have accounted to assist in that as well.
Have you actually had sit-down conversations or discussions as to how this could be worked out mediumly?
That's what I hope we can do after this, if it's still there.
Well, question, commission? I have a question for a city engineer. I'm sure you're aware of the structure. I believe when you're planning on your building, especially when you're out, you do assessment on property as well. You're familiar with expanding.
I haven't seen an order for any of this planning. I know we probably didn't visit the site, but I know the details.
Yeah, we'll let the structure, see the structure.
Not personally, I don't know if you've driven out of it, but I've been inside.
Okay. Mr. McDonald, if they want to say anything.
My name is Chris Angus. I'm sorry, I'm working for Mr. McDonald, I'm a local engineer. And I have been working within, in the process of trying to improve this issue with the city and with the historic preservation board. Some of the history of the house is already been covered, I was going to go through that. I'm just going to hit a couple of points here, it's okay. Mr. McDonald acquired this property sometime in the early seventies, which was prior to the Old Town neighborhood being listed on that list. Prior to his ownership, it was occupied by an architectural firm who renovated inside the building fairly, pretty intelligently. They constructed parallel hallways down the center, it was one big wide hallway. They did a lot of removal of the significant historical architectural artifacts that were in the interior of the building. I have some photographs here, which I'm going to give you a little while. It's in the documented condition of what the building is in right now. After Mr. McDonald's possession of the building in the seventies, it continues to be used as a commercial building. There were two long-term tenants that were in the building until the early two thousands. In nineteen ninety-eight, he listed the property for sale with the board. It's been on the market ever since then. And there have been, there have been no buyers. The First Baptist Church, in fact, did have it under contract in two thousand and nine. Prior to that, however, Mr. McDonald, after he listed the property with the board, he spent about forty thousand dollars on the new roof, on the building, repair, fascia, flashing, and other things to keep the water from coming, entering the building from the exterior. In two thousand and seven, he sold the property in finance sale. He sold the property to Michael Banker. Mr. Banker was known to work this into apartments. He went in the building and did a lot of demolition stuff inside the building, pretty much destroyed most of what had been, or had been destroyed in the first renovation. And never finished any of this. As the cost began to add up, the cost of compliance with codes and other costs began to add up, he initially realized he was not going to be able to rent the apartments for enough money to service the debt. And so he abandoned the property. In two thousand and thirteen, Mr. McDonald foreclosed on the property and took possession of it. One point about the access to the building, with nobody in there, it's very difficult to keep people from the building. There have, the building has been locked since I've been involved in it. It's the key right there, the front door. Stuff can be placed in front of the windows, on porches, to try to keep people out. But if anybody was determined to get in the building, he could get in the building. So the problem with Banker and some other people living there is something very difficult to control. My involvement with, on this project started after he received a letter from, on October fifteenth of last year, from the building official, the city president. And in that letter, they declared this building was an unfit structure. And he was required to begin the process of renovation or demolition of the building at that time. Specifically in the code, the section that was cited, section twelve dash one fourteen, cited that any building, unfit building is any one of the requirements, is any building. And this is the requirement that's in the letter. Any building likely to cause injury to persons or property that contains equipment defective or deteriorated footing, foundation, floor support, ceiling, ceiling support, roof or chimney. They specifically cite in the letter that there were problems with rocky floors always connected with some computers, and that this condition violated the city of Rumsfeld's ordinance. I'm of the opinion that the things that were cited in that section, that we have all of those in this building. There are problems with the footings, there are problems with the foundation. Given an unlimited budget, could these things be prepared or corrected? Given an unlimited budget, you could do a lot of things that you can't do in the real world. After we started working on this, we, first thing we did was we submitted a application for a subjective approval. And then we began working on the documentation to submit to the board, to review that. We obtained some documentation from a real estate broker regarding the fair market value comparison. And I apologize, I missed this when I was going through this. One of the things cited in the letter from the building official was that, and I'm going to quote from the letter, "If you choose to demolish the building, you will have to provide documentation to the city of Rumsfeld. Rehabilitation will not be cost-effective compared to fair market value structure after rehabilitation." Because that is the route that we chose to go, because of the cost of renovating, we began working on those things. We have a letter from a real estate broker certifying that the cost of renovation would exceed the fair market value. I did the cost estimate, this included the passing information that I believe you received for the cost of renovating. And although it's not a, it's not a, the cost estimate is based on an actual plan, if anything, I believe it's low. I don't think that we can recreate some of the exterior trim, or the features, the windows, for the costs that I got in there. So I think if anything, the cost is going to go higher than that. We also obtained from the M L S four or five comparable buildings that are listed for sale right now, that are in good condition, that would be representative of what we could expect to be able to sell the structure for after renovation. And what we're looking at, when you look at the cost to renovate versus the fair market value, it's about a two hundred thousand dollar difference in this. Even if we dim the rear portion of the building, that would, it would reduce the renovation cost, but it would also reduce the fair market value of the renovated structure. So I don't think that would be, I don't believe that would be much of a difference. In addition to that, and you do have a copy of the letter from the church. First Baptist Church is once again interested in the property. This property sits between two of their existing facilities, both of which are relatively modern compared to this building. Relatively modern commercial buildings. There's a concrete parking lot beside this building that's been used by one of those that was used, I suppose, for the architectural office, and it was completely dispossessed. And in the letter that they wrote, that we provided to the board, I'm going to quote one section of that letter. It says that "The church is committed to maintaining the location and growth of this historic downtown and understands that any future proposed building may be reviewed by the historic preservation board prior to a building permit being approved." I think that the use by the church is a good use for the site, surrounded by church properties across the street from the church. It is a commercial building. It has not cost effectively to renovate that building. And we believe that we have met the requirements that were in the letter from the building official to demonstrate that rehabilitation of this building is not feasible. So what we're asking you to do is to grant approval for demolition permit to be issued by the building official with a provision that any historic, or a couple of mantelpieces and one window, it's a leaded glass window, although the glass is all broken out, that may have some value. And Mr. McDonald will remove those items and deliver them to historic preservation board for the city or to someone else, if anybody has a use for that, for those artifacts to use in any other renovation project. And I think you should, McDonald, have some additional comments. Unless you have any questions.
Not missing, commission, question?
I have a question. Have you gotten the breakdown of what you estimated the cost to refurbish? And so I would give to a conversation made here between the two parties. And was, was, has the cost that you addressed been addressed with the board as to comparable materials that could potentially be used that would reduce the cost of the refurbishment?
No, that has not been done. When we started working on this, Mr. McDonald is under the order to do something with this. And he's got various short women to do that in. So he either has to begin renovation project, which is not one of the cost factors compared to fair market value, unless somebody else's funds really used to do the renovation with, that he's going to lose two hundred thousand dollars for going to the property. Or he must begin demolition of the property, comply with this because of the city's unfit building. It's pretty clear in the ordinance, what you have to do with an unfit building. And this has been declared to be an unfit building by building. So I don't think we have a lot of time, I guess is what I'm saying, to try to apply for grants and try to obtain other funds to try to renovate this building. I don't believe we have enough time to do that. And I don't think it would be feasible if we were to go down that avenue.
Oh, if it was granted?
Well, if it was granted, yes.
So answer to my question, is...
No.
No.
Yes, sorry.
He said, earlier, if you keep saying the city official, city of the...
The building official. The building official.
Do you have a copy?
Yes, I do. Why don't you show them? Have any of you been in this building? I've got some photographs here, if you want to look at them. The documents, the condition of the interior of this building is in pretty bad shape.
I was in the building, I was in the 50s. I was, I have a friend, her actually lives in that house.
She did that too. Well, it's gone downhill rather far from there. There are places where when you stand inside the roof inside the building, you can see daylight through a substantial amount of the exterior walls inserted.
The cost estimates for, yeah. Pretty particular, same, um, especially given the fact that I don't know the government of this structure, it's assessed at forty-five thousand, it's taken last year. And then the roof was more recently done, there's a forty-three thousand dollar price tag on that, and eighty-two thousand five hundred for replacing windows since.
The roof, the roof repair was twenty years ago. So it is kind of, if there are places where, I believe, along with the perimeter, yes. The window loss, you can't purchase regular windows. You've got to do something that would need the approval of the board. Honestly, when we're putting together a cost estimate like this, I'm probably, I have a few items in low and few above. Overall, I believe that this is a fair representation of the cost of renovating the structure. And I believe that the chairman of the historic preservation board will hold this one up. He did it for our, adds the help, he said it was frivolous, somewhere in there. But that he believed that this was a fair price to the renovation.
Any other questions, commission? Thank you. Donnie, can I see something?
Any of you know me, know with anybody, Optimus, and then a builder, seller for real estate and real estate, and is a forty-four year, built for thousand, sold for one million dollars. Worth of real estate. I know this. So, I mean, we were a good sewer of our property there for as long as it was anything but functionally obsolescent. It became, it started becoming functionally obsolescent and got away from its historical significance before I thought of it. That was done by the architectural firm, and you heard Chris recite that some of the glory of the building, some of the glory of the structure, they took out. The fire hall that was, was the incident for the day, they took out, put two narrows in so they could accommodate access, but there were sixteen small offices in that building. It further got pulled apart and sold the property in two thousand and seven, the banker and... And unfortunately, I financed it for him. He got it, he got the whole thing, and started putting major apartments in it, and he got about three of them framed up and a little bit of wiring in it, and then he started adding up everything that was telling him he was having to do with it from the city down. And so when they, he abandoned it and bought it on beginning of 2013, go back. So we have been through that building 100 times determining what we can do with it that would be economically feasible. And your ordinance only allows that you consider the request we're giving you for something that's economically not viable. And the cost to restore that, bring it up to the city requirements of ADA, inclusive of fire suppression, everything that has to go into it, is a number that is substantially higher than the building's worth. Chris cited the MLS, the most recent sale in downtown Brunswick. Historic is McGarty House across the street from the Elder Courthouse, $80's worth of it. And that was one of the comps we used and the number that we gave. It's just, it's just not there. There is a user for it. The user has submitted in writing, the church, that they will submit plans to the city of Brunswick. They will keep some historical significance within the structure to give it the look and feel downtown Brunswick. So I ask your ordinance and give us an opportunity to work with them to get a youth center there for the church. They own the property on both sides, of course they own the church. In their own commitment to, in the letter, they make a commitment of long-term play in downtown Brunswick, so they were good neighbors. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. McDonald?
Number one, what would you thinking? What was your thought or choice for your original purpose of the property, seven?
From '74, I was approached by Ben Slade, Ben Slade was then the guy who ran First Baptist Church in London. Then foreclosed on the property from the church charter offer, who had to take off, and then taken the property back and came to bid. Did a form for them to provide construction on his own. Ben said, "I did a big favor." I would take that off the savings loan books. They really did have them. So that's how I got in and been in it ever since. Which was long before the historical significance came out with the ordinances and that.
But there have been more recent sales in historic, I've walked them down. Probably side of the McGarty house because it is done in commercial for office.
That was in the paper. Good recent sale.
For any questions? What's up, Dan McDonald? Since you've had the property, what has been your profit loss with the property?
I don't like, I don't like without a profit on the property. The property, they passed when we kept it rented with the break-even situation at that time. In between the taxes, maintenance, insurance, and other things to go with it, it passed with the break-even thing. Got some appreciation today for tax terms.
All right. Now I'll entertain any one who would like to speak before or in, and I'll open this up for comment here. So keep your comments to three and a half minutes. Could you comment to Ricky that had presence, please?
As you can see by the timeline, we have wasted a lot of time and resources on the property owner.
Dean, please state the day of the act.
17/11/27 Union Street. Okay, as you can see by the timeline, we have wasted a lot of time and resources on the property owner of 1315 Union Street. A few things I would like to point out. The owner has purposely neglected this building in hopes that he did it with demolition by neglect. The Baptist Church has no interest in this property until the building is gone. The Baptist Church has wanted this property delivered since 2009 I was here. They currently own 11 pieces of property in the city of Brunswick, valued at $3,265,000. A loss of property tax to the city of $43,000 a year. Do they, do we really, do they really need another parking lot? Do we really need to take this off the tax hold for a parking lot? The owner has no interest in this home or in the city of Brunswick. One of the things that the city of Brunswick has going forward is our history and our historic homes. For six years, we've done historic business tour homes. 300 to 350 people each year buy tickets, most of them from outside Lake County. In 2015, the Georgia Trust called their convention their Jack Black. They toured 16 homes and businesses in the city of Brunswick. My home was one of them. Of the 200-plus people that came through my home, the most common comment I got, I had no idea the city of Brunswick had this many beautiful historic homes. Most of them came from the Atlanta-Macon area, but we did get people from California, New York, and Kalamans, Colorado. I want to compare my home, 1127 to 1315 Union Street. The land value according to the Lake County tax assessors, my land value, 1127, is $17,600. 1315 is $37,000. He didn't swear footage per Lake County test, though. My home is $4,200. 1315 is $4,246. Property taxes per Lake County tax commission. My home, 1127, $2,031. 1315 Union Street, $854.14. There's very little difference in these two home size wise, but one pays three times more taxes. This home should add to the tax home, not take away from it. We have an organization in Brunswick called Brunswick Historic Foundation. That was formed in 2013. The purpose of this group is to strive and save historic homes. I would like to suggest that the owner of 1315 Union Street sit down with the group and try to come to some sort of an agreement that works for our community. 1315 Union Street is more than a rare George Barrow. It represents the identity of the Victoria District, of the city of Brunswick, and it has connections to the history of the people who helped build this city. T.S. Winters, who owned a tailor shop at 311 W. Gessel in 1901, and was the original owner. Samuel Carter, name is still on the tower floor, issues store in 1927, is what now is the French Shop W. Gessel. We must not allow our Victorians to become urban because they are the heart and soul of Old Town. I asked in 2009 to deny demolition, and here we are seven years later, and I'm asking again to deny demolition and do whatever is necessary and lawful to save some piece of Brunswick history. Let me just tell you, my home is 1127. This was my concern in 2009. I was transferred to the Catholic school. My home is out of market for $439,000. The Catholic school is looking at buying my house. What's to stop them from busting open somewhere, those people? Let's let them come to you, let water get in it, and then come to you and say, "Tear it down." This was neglected since 2009. Those windows have been busted out, they haven't went bad and fixed them. As you can see by this timeline, how many times have we tried to get ahold of the owner of the property? Please deny this request. There's other options.
Anyone else who'd like to speak more against the man of this appeal? Wow, Dean, you can speak for everybody. Anyhow, Commissioners, we have a task at hand. There any discussion on all this, or if we call for a vote?
I do. Mr. Baker?
Marty, go ahead and speak up for him.
Our building official, it was an issue on conditions of property and whether they're sustainable or what the issues are. Talk about a property within the boundaries of the historic district. Is there, do we have permits in place that act as an additional order for historic properties? Or this is a one-size-fits-all? Because it's some standard in some way, it's not... The fact that it's within the historic district is not taken into consideration when they talk about demolition?
I'm not sure if I can, but let me try and interpret this way. Building official determined it to be a nuisance property and gave the owner an option to either fix it up or tear it down. Deny it, okay, because it's in this historic district category of Historic Preservation Board to take either path. So there is a choice for the property owner, either demolition or renovation. The other portion that is in the code is called demolition title. I'm not sure if that's referred to. I sent Mr. McDonald a letter a good bit ago because the property needs demolition by definition. In other words, you cannot absolutely, you cannot neglect a historic building to the point where you're allowing it to be demolished. I don't have airbags, I don't have a front. You have security, you can't let water get in it. If you can't let your glass be broken, your hole in the siding, your roof not being complete, there are shingles missing, or small portion, there's still shingles, new roof, that's missing. Whether we got in or didn't, it might be absolutely meets the definition of demolition title. And that's why a citation can be made in court as march.
Demolition by neglect does not necessarily give permission to the owner to have, to do demolition. Obviously, they've got to come to the Historic Preservation Board.
It is the same, same option. Demolition by neglect, the letter was sent, and the option is to fix it up or begin the process of tearing it down. The same option as ineffective as the letter that was given by the building official. It is not part of the lunch to go demolish the building.
So if the owner decides to do nothing, he's still at the same point, am I correct?
Well, the owner's currently in court over this and has been given a reprieve to go down this path that we're pulling down tonight. If you're asking, what is the next step? The step says, I see it, if the building, if you approve the demolition, then it just goes forward with the demolition permit. If you deny the request to overturn the denial, then his option would be to find a way to fix it up, put it on the market for a reasonable sum, or the next step in the proceeding to be in court.
So, Mr., you're saying that we forced this individual to fix the property? To fix that property, because if he does not, by neglect, then he's gonna get fined and fined and fined.
It does not, it's a city code, so the property owner has been given the option. He's chosen one of the two paths.
If the individual is saying that it costs too much to fix it up, he's forced to do something that he doesn't have the means to do, what are we doing?
I'm not convinced he doesn't have the means, because that hasn't been provided. It's your choice if you want to believe in numbers that have been provided and whether to choose to allow demolition based on the numbers that have been provided. And I, that is seriously...
Okay, our building official went to you, department.
Yes, I understand that.
So we don't have that document to tell us exactly what was...
It's a two-page thing. It declares it to be not a nuisance, but a...
Unfit building.
An unfit building, and again, gives the property owner a choice, going down two different paths. And it does not, he did not condemn the building. He did not say, "This is so structurally awful, it needs to come down now." It is a safety hazard to all people that walk near it. That was not said. So my objection to that is it's not such an awful condition that it needs to come down. He gave them the path of either going through demolition or fixing it up.
So this is, this letter was supposed to have been a motivator to move him in the direction of maintaining that property as initially might sit that it would happen?
That's absolutely correct. Both the demolition by neglect letter and the letter by the building official are put the property over. Notice that it does not meet city code, something must be wrong.
Is this the same as that 1717? Almost the same, it's the same scenario?
Both.
1717 is subject to historic...
Yeah, but sadly, it's still, yet still, it came for us. We got a decision in the way you're looking at it. But we realize that we are not historic preservationists in this sense, and that we have to go by ourselves in our ordinance as well. So that's something that, Commissioners, that you take a look at, so on and forth.
Mr., I want to make some clear on this. We gave the individual an option, he said, take option one or option two. Took option two. Now we're saying, no, you can't do two. That's, that's wrong with you.
Well, I think the letter said that you took option two first, or you want to see the demolition. Either way, you're going to go in front of the historic preservation. They have the authority to do the reprieves and the remem, or they have the authority to adjourn the demolition. So it's not that you pick on it and you should get it. It's that you pick these options, but be aware, you still have to go through the car proceedings to figure it out, prove it, and you have to do that.
Because it was deemed a contributing structure within the historic district, it still had merit and value invested by the Historic Preservation Board in the request for demolition?
I will leave the chairman over to that question.
I'm sorry. No, it wasn't, it was... No, the question was, in reference to what the Assistant City Attorney said as to having two options, either rehabilitated the property and set it to active market standards, or we have the option to go to Historic Preservation Board to demolish the home. And they asked it in depth. Right. Through the process, the Historic Preservation Board, correct me if I'm wrong, deemed that the property was a contributing structure within and about the historic district, still had character and merit, and was worthy of rehab. And so that is why they denied the application, is that correct for demolition?
In part, the house was deemed a contributing part of the district when the district was first approved. It has been a contributing structure for a number of years now, since the buildings came in, in, whatever day it was. It was already a contributing structure. But as a contributing structure within that, it comes to the authority as being able to have some sway in what happens to that asset of the district. And then yes, we denied it. There wasn't any thing, part of the ordinance has, there was options for hardship. That was never asked, there was never demonstration of a hardship. There was only that it's gonna be too much money and we're not gonna spend it. And I can understand that, and I can appreciate that. At the same time, there are others, you don't, you don't jump into these projects... At the same time, there are others, you know, you don't jump into these projects from the money side of it. I understand that you've been about the ha, brought the house as a business. He's conducted this business with the house as a business. This is our historic district. And unfortunately, to the business person, that may not make sense. But it's our passion, it's our welcome to the district, and our love for the community, and those things. And we don't want to lose those pieces of that fabric.
Can I ask this question? I'm just trying to figure out something. Does the historic preservation group, do you want to provide any assistance to individuals who have historic homes to help them to renovate or to remodel? Anything of that nature?
Because the preservation board has no funding from the city, we're a volunteer.
I didn't say from the city, I, I had the preservation board. Do you want to help anyone?
If anybody asks, I don't know if the advice is, since I'm giving an award. We do give them information about active credits, and that information that can be available for rehab projects and those kinds of things.
Have you all, who would be any demolition systems, since you've gone on tour?
A few.
A worthiness?
I'm sorry.
Um, worthiness, uh, progress?
Yeah, a few. Nothing of this merit. There was a small, that I can't recall, and that company was nothing better than a plant. There was one, one of those were there, one that was a non-contributing structure that was being ran by a official to a house there that was right across the street from Golden Middle School, or River Fountain.
Well, we're here trying to decide how can we either keep the structure, uh, from tariffing that historic preservation board is looking for, and I'm sort of different, or how can we, uh, tear it down and make something else there?
Another option was to sell. Another option was to sell.
Sure.
And that's not ours, it's ours here to sell.
And that person bought, I got a lot of charity. Well, finally, if it is, if you can find somebody else that can assist in finding somebody that could buy it. Nobody can give you two hundred thousand dollars, I can do what they have, please.
Could I make a point?
Yes, go back.
I would like to, a couple things, I just want to point out the house that I've had done since, since nineteen ninety-eight. Built in March since nineteen ninety-eight. So if there was anybody willing to jump up and buy the thing since nineteen ninety-eight, I'd leave them with a note, a face of interest in the house. But I would like to call your attention back to the letter from the building official. And what the letter says is, if you, it said, either the building is declared an unfit building and is a nuisance, your options are to rehabilitate or demolish. If you choose to rehabilitate, a building permit will be required. If you choose to demolish, you will have to provide documentation to the city in person to show that rehabilitation would not be cost effective, prepared to bear market value. Add for rehabilitation, and also says that we would have to seek the approval of the historic preservation board first. It does not say we would have to get the approval of this one.
Thank you, Dave, and, um...
Rosemary, Rosemary is in, I'm with five to four, sir. The, another option we just have to discuss is, um, the Historic Preservation Foundation, which is a separate group from the Historic Preservation Board. Last week, sent a letter to John Dunn, offering to put volunteer time in to stabilize thirteen fifteen Main Street. Stabilizing the structure means to make it watertight, um, not even so you can break in, or we can break into it. And we have offered to do that at no charge, except for whatever materials might be needed to board the windows and so forth, in order to allow the building to be secure until, um, something comes along, or buy it at fair price. And that was our offer. So just throwing that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, sir, and, um...
Thank you. Again, my name is Lance Sadie, I'm at eleven ten Red Street. Uh, I'm here representing the Historic Preservation Federation, uh, as well as Rosemary and any of my other colleagues. The opposite she just discussed, what I would like to continue and elaborate, I would propose is that you table this decision, uh, for thirty days, allowing us to negotiate with the district. And, uh, in regards to that stabilization, stabilization of the building, uh, meeting warnings of requirements with water intrusion, um, and any other safety issues. So that'll allow us basically thirty days to meet with them, discuss that, and get that out of the way. And then we can look at a long-term plan for the structure, again, viewing it as an asset to our community instead of just a hazard. So I understand your concern with it being a hazard, and also we recognize the need for the property owner to be able to recoup some of the expenses. But we're in a position as a five oh one C three to kind of act as a middleman and try to save the structure for the city, a beautiful historic downtown. So at the very least today, I ask for you to table this decision. Obviously, we don't want to see a demolition or demolish, so again, I'm pleased that's a rational consideration. Thank you.
I'd like to hear from George McDonald.
Okay, uh, commissioners, uh, we heard from, uh, something, we heard from, from, uh, the preservation board, we heard from, uh, Mr. Amos, uh...
I'd like to take a motion that we, that we do defer this. I think that there's, you know, there's time, and I think time, we need to use that on our side in order to take a look at all the options available. So I would ask that we defer this for at least thirty days. But my motion would be to defer it until April, whatever's our first...
First meeting in April?
First meeting in April.
Commander, Commissioner, is that allowed with the ordinance?
I'm sorry?
Is that allowed with the ordinance, because of the timeframe?
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, uh, so you, I think pending the final decision on thirty days, of course, and their final, final decision.
Okay, good, probably motion second for, uh, us to table this until, uh, our, our, first meeting in April. And the discussion, first of all, I have one discussion, I, uh, uh, Mr. McDunough, I disagree with you.
No, sir.
Sir?
No, sir.
And why?
The First Avenue Church of Brunswick has been there longer than anybody. And the First Avenue Church of Brunswick has very solid views for that building as a youth facility. Somebody got upset, it's going to be a hard life, not a hard life, to build a youth facility. And the city, and the First Church of Brunswick has put in writing that they will put a presence on that building to have it, uh, honor the Dan Tan presence, or historic presence of Dan Tan. One of the things we didn't look at is leaving foraging columns up front, high up to the new structure with Victorian style in front of the building, so that it does do that. They need to move forward, we need to move forward, we're dealing with this since, uh, two thousand and nine. Property's been on the market since nineteen ninety-eight, and nobody stepped up. Now, all of a sudden, we get a solution, I never see the level this week or last week. I really appreciate that offer, and that was a, that was a very, I think, heartfelt, sincere offer. And, you know, would have been worth considering, and turn it down, then, you know, wide open. You know, I asked you to consider our, uh, request to demolish the building, it's good work in front with the, uh, First Avenue Church of Brunswick, submit plans to the city, and the historical society can work it out, sir.
Thank you, sir, uh, uh, the comments are well taken. However, uh, this commission has to move forward with their decision, either table this or, or to move forward with this instance. So, commissioners, um, we have a motion to the second for to, uh, table this until the first meeting in April. Ready to vote? Yes. Okay. All those in favor of table this until April, first meeting April, please raise your right hand. All those in favor of not, please raise your right hand. Okay, that motion, let the, let reflect that there was four to one, uh, we would table this until our, uh, next meeting in April. However, we will, uh, ask that the historic preservation board, uh, get with Mr. McDunough and try to, uh, go through all the options, and maybe we can come to a better amount, losing, uh, when we make that decision. Thank you. Bow me, bow me. Put our hands. All right, thank you so very much for the move forward. Uh, if one of you believe you may, we may so fight. Okay, item number three, consider approval of January twenty, two thousand sixteen, regular scheduled meeting minutes. Think of, uh, second to prove, I didn't take the motion, I'm sorry, but those you can prove.
Uh, second.
What's the second for the approval of our January twenty, two thousand sixteen, regular scheduled meeting minutes? I didn't record the discussion. And none, here none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, I'm going to carry this as well. Uh, item number four, consider approval of resolution, date is number twenty sixteen oh one, supporting completion of Coastal Jordan Greenway. Mr. Jordan. You want to present to the draw? Do you take that to the next? Motion we defer this item until our next scheduled meeting?
Second.
Motion second to, uh, item number four to be deferred until our next meeting. No, there's a discussion?
Yes, um, my, my question is, um, do we, it's a resolution, do, do we need to table it? It's not obligating the city, it's really just to follow with our legislators, and you have the state level, you're not really asking.
You know, I think we have, we have a review for, you know, recombating it.
Because I know this has passed a trial, um, it's abandoned.
Well, there's a motion to, to, uh, to take the, uh, tonight, you have some motion, okay. But now, it is another one, please.
I make a motion that we do go with that and, uh, approve the resolution number two oh one six dash oh one, supporting completion of the Coastal Jordan Greenway.
Sure. Okay, motion second for approval of resolution, uh, Coastal Jordan Greenway, uh, then further, second. And all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, I'm going to carry. All right, item number five. Still approval of resolution number twenty sixteen oh two, operating Coastal Regional Area Community Action Authority, platinum destination, promise on for the city of Brunswick. Mr. Jim Drew is presenting, I'm Sidney Maddox.
Good evening, Mr. Eric, as you said, we now have, actually, a program in force that we can bring to Brunswick through our, uh, center, the Coastal Regional Area Community Action Authority, the CAA, we have been approached that they're looking to make an application for the promise of the location. As such, we have been requested to pass a resolution that would support the application. It was not a cost to the city, it would be also, we think, that we are a full obligation to, to get, it's not a complication that allows us to, uh, build a plant that allows us to do much greater things in the community. I might refer to Trace House, it's the director of that organization, she's going to explain the, uh, promise on.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen.
I have to make one correction, it's Coastal Jordan Area Community Action Authority. No, it's not, it's on the wrong, it's not, it's Coastal Jordan Community Action Authority. I'm going to just want to give just a little bit of background. I did, um, pass out to any one of you a packet, um, talking, giving specifics about the importance of the chromosome and this application and this destination as it relates to the city of Brunswick. But back into October twenty fourteen, um, Coastal Jordan Community Action Authority, we, what we did was, we started a grassroots effort. And with this grassroots effort, we brought about, we brought together a number of organizations, this is public and private and nonprofit. And what we're looking to do is, the purpose of this is to, to address the issue of generational poverty within the city of Brunswick. As you may or may not know, it is the mission of the Coastal Jordan Community Action Authority to address poverty and to move families and individuals and children to a point of self-sufficiency. And with this being, excuse me, one of the cities that we serve, we take great interest in that. And as a result, our coalition has been meeting, and like, there is a list of organizations in that category that have participated in the coalition. And as a result of that, coalition came together and what we decided to do, so many things, in order to address the issues of poverty, we know that poverty is, is, um, a mirror of things as it relates to why it is that our families are requiring poverty and remain in poverty over a number of years. And so with that, we came up, we, uh, we created from the coalitions, seven solution teams to address specific areas. Those areas also been there, but, um, they are, um, housing, asset development, the last song does, I forget the law. Housing, asset development, as well as, um, education, historic preservation, it's not a disease, historic preservation, minority business development, health care, neighborhood associations, and historic preservation. And so with that, each one of these asset teams has taken that particular area, and what they're doing is looking at not the cause, not only the causes of the solutions. Because as we all know, we can plan, we can plan with a plan, and we can talk, and we can talk, but until something gets off the table and action is done, then, then nothing goes anywhere. And so as a result of it, what we have done is those particular solution teams have come up with different activities and strategies to address those specific areas. And what we have decided is that ultimately, is that the plans that we've done, because we've done a lot of things in, since twenty fourteen, the teams have been working, and so a lot of different activities have taken place over this, um, period of time. But in addition to that, what we wanted to do was take those activities, those specific activities, and show how it is that the city of Brunswick and its businesses and its nonprofits, and how it is that we are all working together in order to improve the, um, the livelihood and the living situations and the situation of our residents. And so with that, what we're going to do is take those particular activities, and put those activities into the application. If we are fortunate enough to receive the promise on designation, because this was an initiative put in back in twenty thirteen under the current administration, the Obama administration. If we are fortunate enough to receive that designation here within the city, it will open up a myriad of funding opportunities. city, it will open up a mirror of funding opportunities for the city, up to thirty million dollars. If there are no dollars that actually come with the designation, let me make that very clear, the dollars come afterwards, in which we have, there is a listing packet of twelve federal organizations which will direct there, which are pledged to direct their funding to those areas that have been given that designation. And so with that, that will open up a mirror of funding, a mirror of funding for this community in order for us to meet the needs of our residents, excuse me, the needs of our residents. So this is the premise of it, the application itself is to February twenty third, February twenty third, and they will probably make their decisions probably late in twenty sixteen, late this year. There's a total of twenty, there are going to be a total of twenty designated, and the designations come under rule tribal in her, we will be applying under the rule designation. And this is the last round, third round of it, so this is the last round of designations unless it's renewed. So, that's a lot of information in a very short period of time.
Like we said, I want to say, I'm very aware of the chromosome. I was talking with people in the DC and others about the same initiative, and they told me how we can garner some of those funds and little agencies, other agencies there that will help us revitalize the city and get a, eradicate a lot of poverty. So I appreciate the fact that you were joining us for the city of Brunswick for partnership, ask for a partnership with the city of Brunswick. So commissioners, I realize that as we look through our package, I've seen Maggie say we don't have our.
Mr. James, I have addressed that we see the draft resolution, the resolution's not completed at this point, what I'd like to ask tonight, and I do support the partnership with the CAA, and I believe what I would ask tonight is if the city commission, if they're authorizing there, to sign the resolution upon its completion and review on the city as well.
I would like to have a comment, I've attended many meetings and I'm very proud of the work that's been done and with all the folks involved, and Mr. Booker is in to have been in many of the meetings as well. I think it would be awesome if we, if we are one of the twenty chosen, because I think, even if we're not, I really hope, I think it's been a great experience for all the folks that have come together, all the different meetings, all the different groups, because it really has helped us to focus on things as a whole community, especially looking at all the problems and all the issues across all those different categories, instead of everybody working in their own silo. So, thank you so much for all the efforts that you've put into it. One question I do have, I know that designation is a ten-year designation, so I have two questions regarding that. One is, this round and this choice of twenty communities, when would the next time be that this process would occur? Is it going to be over ten years? Is there a time gap? Or do you come on and off? If your community rises and hit certain benchmarks and you no longer qualify for that designation?
No, in all actuality, this is the very last round. They've been doing, there were two other rounds of designations prior to this. Only way there will be another one is if the court is continued into the next administration. And we know we all have an election coming up, so that's the only way. However, the ten-year designation will remain with us for that entire ten-year period. And I also have to say that within that, we have, one of the partners that you can see is the College of Coastal Georgia, and also in a presentation where Dr. Whitersham did a survey for us, and so she put her results of her survey, and so they have graciously agreed to track through the data tracking for us over the extent of the ten-year period. And they said that even if we did not receive the designation, if we as a unit, as a coalition continue to move forward and do those activities and put those, that they would track our progress as a city.
And the groups and organizations that currently follow in a noted way, they're not going to be hampered or disqualified, I don't know if that's what they're looking for, but all of this will still work in concert with funding that they get, because most of their funding is more at local level as opposed to the federal level.
Yes, and really in all actuality, some of us, we have a lot of nonprofits, and some of them may not have that five one C three designation. So therefore, it does not stop them from receiving dollars, but what that will mean is that they will have to partner with us, Coastal, or with the city to get additional dollars that may be to carry out some activities. So it would not hamper or, in fact, it will probably enhance funding for some of our smaller nonprofits that are doing the next job out there as well.
And it would still, as that chromosome, apply for that funding and spending of these facilities?
Yes, we do. We will, we would, we would actually apply for the funding still, and there's a list of the different types of funding and the federal agencies that they come under, we will still apply for those. The enhancements would be in that we will receive preference, as a chromosome, we will receive preference. In addition to that, they would also send us, we would also have access to file a mirror for volunteer workers to help us, as well as a federal liaison, who would also guide us through the red table as we all know about funding for our this night, so. And I just want to say something, because I've been a part of it since the initiation of the effort, and it is something that I was proud to see, because it's something that I always wanted to see when I came on as commissioner, was to see this collaborative happen in this community between all of the very good stakeholders that are here, and in that one city, we did more in that year than I've seen probably since I've been an adult, back home in Glendale County period, and that's to bring together in one room so many diverse organizations to have on one court. So, that effort has really done a tremendous effort here, and I'm happy to see it come to fruition, and the chromosome can't do anything but, no, promises come to pass.
Thank you so much.
So commissioners, we are, I'm going to take a motion to move forward as the city manager requested.
I make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty sixteen dash oh two, authorizing the coastal area community action authority of platinum designation, chromosome.
Second.
Motion second for approval of resolution for twenty sixteen dash oh two, and then further discussion. And all those in favor, please raise your right hand. I have no care. Thank you so very much. Alright, we are, item number six, consider approval of allocating budget to the Urban redevelopment agency, the way it deals with it, downtown development. Good evening. Actually, this is urban redevelopment agency item, so I want to introduce you to the chairman, Lee Austin.
Please. I just feel that. Please. We have forty requests for a budget, and you know, we've been together now for over a year, year and a half, so we had additional training, since then, we've had these three new members who are aboard. We've not had any additional training, so we have many responsibilities, and we need to have constant learning going on, so we need to have some training to make that happen. So, our request is for up to fifteen thousand dollars for training, and I want to see the training, especially initially, be done together as a body, so we get a chance to hear and understand together what sort of issues are, be able to hear, understand, what any of the concerns or questions that are in there with that, whether they're one going here, one going here, coming back, again, for the sake of what they heard. So that's what we'd like to do in terms of what our priorities are. My top priority is to get training that helps us get dollars, because we need dollars, we don't want to have to keep coming to you saying, give us a dollar to produce that together, we want to be able to do something so that we can generate some dollars so that we can begin to operate in a way in concert with you, but not have to pick your pocket to do it.
Questions for Mr. Austin, commissioners?
I have a question, and it's kind of towards the city manager as well. We made an allocation of thirty thousand dollars towards this board, can a portion of that be reallocated to address this need?
Thirty thousand dollars that was allocated primarily to those funds, a hundred percent of those foster funds were developed in the middle of the block specifically. It could be used to study the local block for planning studies, initially they were set aside for studies toward that project, so this could be more of a general operational expense for board and rap, actually some of the classes, lots of.
I have a question, Mr. Austin, of your department, I know since it's a relatively new agency, there's numbers slated to roll off, and who wants to be appointed until a certain number of years, and then folks stay on for a year?
I think it's three years.
Three years.
So we may not be able to answer the questions tonight, but do you know if we have one or more than one person that might be rolling off in twenty sixteen? I'm not a hundred percent sure, but because we have two members come on, I don't think we have anybody that we, we may have one person, because we have one, two, three-year roll-offs. I always run them three years, so I don't think we have that many, because they would have to make some year, and that would be a person.
So where would the fund come from, city manager?
Maybe come from the general fund, the reality funds do this, there could be something available, the mission, do we have a bar?
What about recapture funds? Only question for the funds, I don't know how many funds are recaptured.
There's about forty-two thousand dollars still in that Cypress Mill recapture fund.
Many of it now, there matches or anything?
Some of it has been allocated, but some of that's already been used, so there is a little money in there.
How much will we ask in?
Fifty, fifty thousand that may not lock up, apparently we need to help.
And we would be running all of the, you know, you're not.
No, not this time, we have a treasurer, because of the limited amount of money and financial activity that we have, it doesn't make any sense to do that.
Only voices to come through the city's financial department, even though.
And the first question, I know we said, said up to fifteen thousand, could be up to, you know, a committee, you want to make a lower number, fifteen thousand is too much?
Or you can make it a higher.
That for your talent?
Do we have any idea, I'm just kind of asking, I know that we have a college institute, joint missile association training, do we have any idea what those actual training costs per person?
We have, I'm sure there are some trainings that are often through, often through our office institute, and I'm not much familiar with those fees, we're basically sub there person. Do you follow someone's?
The Carl Vincent Institute was two seventy-five per person for the one training that they have that might be applicable to the redevelopment agency.
Now you want us to conference, we have a site already located, so maybe access could be made.
Right, so that would, that would not include travel.
Could we bring a person here?
For additional cost, yes. We have to try and get a person to come here, so everybody who gets trained, we have something that's more like a lot of half-day training, because many people on board have jobs, but they couldn't give up a half-day, so that's the kind of people that we're looking for.
Okay, so how was, how was the fifteen thousand dollars derived?
Well, we talked about that, that one training, and then we also did contact with some other people, let's buy the kind of training that we, especially in relation to seeking funds, and there were prices of like, they come in for a half-day, three thousand, five thousand, so that's our, to figure.
Okay.
Are we want to, the city, the oversight of the training, or do you guys pick training as our, our blue?
Well, we don't, we don't necessarily think about blue, but we look at ones that particularly fit what our needs is, and then we go for there.
Well, I was thinking, you know, most times, since we, the board, it's something that was staffed by, by city of both, that, you know, the type of training you need, you come to us, ask for, the type of training, we allocate those funds directly for that more, as we're saying, up to fifteen thousand dollars minimum, and if we can do it that way, or in fact, we're going to give you fifteen thousand dollars, you just do what you want to do.
So I think what we would be doing, and it has been done in the past, to be some other chair, anything that I, what we plan to do, I let you know before I do it.
Yes. I'll bring it out before the board, before we do it, and so understanding that if the type of training you seek, you break, give us a letter, or you know that this is the type of training, and one of them is going to cost, we approve up to fifteen thousand dollars.
Yes.
Up to your limit is fifteen, not to exceed that.
Mr. Eric, a question, do they bring back the goals to you and the city?
Well, what I'm saying, if they, I'm saying more training on mobilization or whatever, you know, and that's what they need, so it's going to cost them, they say, three thousand dollars, press it down, they'll be quest, training three thousand, you know, so, well, to go through you, I guess, or anything.
Also, you have, you want to make that specifically, maybe you can be the way, now I think money is spent in more, making a decision, or if you could freeze this process, or speaking of covered ideas, they can't allow.
Well, so, so, y'all, try to, yeah. Alright, so we're here to welcome, we're going to motions to.
Now, let me ask one more question. Okay, we said something about where the money is going to come, and I think a mention was made about the recapture funds.
Yes.
Okay, so we have something else that's coming before us, that's going to be, they all need to, the recapture fund, so we need to make sure, we're looking at recapture funding, we got a whole bunch of funds that we recapture, so we need to make sure that we have the appropriate funds from the recapture fund, when we go and designate something else that comes out, something we don't know how much we're going to be using of this other company.
There's not much left.
So that's my point exactly. So we make a promise to full funds from one fund, and say we're going to fund this over here, we got another project that we're going to deal with tonight, and funds are going to be coming from that project, so we need to be a little more detailed and defined. We're saying we're going to be giving money to something, and we, then we have to go somewhere, some of the money, so we have to expect to get those funds from another place.
You said the total cost of this contract will be fifty-four thousand.
Fifty-four, so what would it be in a total of?
About seven thousand dollars there, which is the portion of the irrigation system going to grant on our contract.
That's seventy-two seventy that we would be out of pocket for right now, but the other half of the irrigation part of it.
Irrigation.
So what's the, what's the monumental cost?
The monumental sand is gonna be about twelve thousand dollars. That includes the sand, the lathering, the lighting, and the utility borings we get, utility under Highway seventeen.
So that's materials, labor, installation, and sapulation.
That is installing with our department corrections, you will later prove.
So, so that means that if we have forty-two thousand, you'll recapture funds. We already can take twenty thousand from that, or two thousand. So now you see why I said we need to look at some stuff in the closer, the allocated funds.
Did we, did we do the math right on that? That's close to that twenty thousand to, to complete Phase One?
Yes ma'am.
Sleeves under seventy-five percent. We got all the approval for everything from the DOT.
We have our permits in hand.
So we could.
What was that time you made before we get into that?
The contract is hoping as soon as we give him the go-ahead, he's probably looking at about four weeks before we can get in there and get started. In the meantime, we can go ahead and get in there and get our utility borings done and get started on our monumental sand. So that it is at least up out of the ground, out of the way. And it's all the last day from there.
Have we done any of the, the warrant in the underground sleeve conduits under seventeen, we haven't done?
Nothing's been done yet. I would wait until we get this ironed out and make sure that this is not being ruined.
Would that, would that be able to happen concurrently once, once approval's given? Is that, that portion could go yet or no?
We could get the borings done, possibly sometime next week. And then get started on the monumental sand. Within the next couple of weeks, I'm not sure what their schedule is. We may take a good several minutes and finish up some existing projects. But if we do that, we, we by the time last day, it starts longer out of the ground.
How's that going to deal with traffic? That will be any control of traffic?
It won't. Everything will be contained in the median. There will be slight, um, we'll have it cross traffic a couple of times with some trees. There's a couple of trees to get moved from the west island over into the median. That's covered under our DOT permit and they're very comprehensive traffic control through that DOT permit.
You've got money in your portfolio?
I see that's, that's, uh, missing forward to advanced warning signs. It will be worked out as advanced as possible, let people know.
We're currently applying for this year's roadside assistance, roadside assistance, roadside publication, which is what Gateway Grant used to be. At Fort Avenue. So we, if we're awarded that grant, we need to make sure that we're budgeting for the match on that. But we also want to see if we can't run it to Phase Two possible on continuing the foster line out. Are we looking to do that or?
I'm sorry, are you gonna be able to do that?
Well.
Do you think we can do continuation of the local foster?
Well, well, Phase One, she sounds like Phase Two.
Yeah. So we wait for a third year application on the A layer of roadside publication for the next phase of Len Avenue, I guess is my question.
I don't know how silent things, it would be that next cycle because those are exposed to what the water will fill down and you can't go over that cycle.
Right.
So you have to follow second. Now just be the, not in the next year, but within the coming second, we'll be following.
So if we do, and we're able to third year out, block, store, installation into Phase Two, there's a matching grant. We would still have some irrigation work, but we would need.
No, 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 this would complete the irrigation system as a plan for irrigation in another two.
Okay.
But it could be expanded.
It could be expanded, but the design is such that those are not irrigation-dependent plants. We, we specifically did that to try to minimize our costs, but we didn't want to irrigate that area right around the monumental sand with higher visibility.
And, and I guess what my question, I'm, I'm actually trying to get to is the fact that we have already got the design work done, more or less, for those next phases. We can take grant funding from DOT and put it in what, in actual plant and all the materials, have we, or do not?
Ideally, the next, the next phase, we, next cycle grant, it'll be a, a block for, we can carry that amount and we'll go towards that. And those, those, these grants do not require the local match. So, you know, one hundred percent of that grant amount is good for us. Hopefully, the price of our contract, we could complete the project in the second phase.
This is a tough thing right now. That was an unfortunate set of circumstances.
Here, what would be the highest of these, uh, stable treatments, wherever they are?
We've got some fourteen, some eighteen, going in, there's two different sizes, all fourteen, thirteen. So those three, Ronald, and then some sixteen, Diane.
All right. Any questions? Here and now, I'll just hand a motion.
May I have a motion to approve the Gateway Grant body Phase One?
Motion, second for the approval of Gateway Grant body. Contract for Phase One, some discussion. Being the all-of-state this way, party, motion carried. Now, we're down to our superintendent of finance, our, our finance director, Mr. Mills, presenting our financial report for December thirty-first, ending December thirty-first. Ms. Mills.
That's fine with me.
Yes, thank you.
And the year is December thirty-first, which is obviously at fifty-seven percent. Uh, you can see your year-to-date revenues, eight point five million compared to year-to-date expenditures, six point oh million. And we are at six point nine four percent over budget and collection of revenues, and nine point three two percent under budget and expenditures. Cash balance as of December thirty-first is three point three million dollars in the general fund. Briefly, the loss year-to-date, we'll see, we have two, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand compared to two thousand and seven hundred and seventy-four thousand from six months last year, which is a decrease of six point six five percent, which was part of the final monthly on the loss negotiation. Highlighted warrant tax, three hundred and twenty-one thousand this year compared to three hundred and thirty-one thousand last year, which is a decrease of three point oh five percent in loss. We have cash balance of two point four million dollars. You see, this, for this current month, we paid out about nine thousand dollars in stormwater improvements and twenty-eight hundred dollars in finishing up our best league this part. And you can see that we have a right-hand column, uh, projects still in process, two point four million dollars. Majority of that money, of course, they did over-division center at one point five million. We have community development admin. There is, um, restricted cash balance of twenty-three thousand dollars, which was contributions we had for the parks. We have contributed thirty-seven thousand five hundred from the general fund. And, um, that money, you know, basically the community admin is on duty to pay some salaries for community development department. And we will start seeing some money coming in from those as we draw in some funds for those salaries. So the general fund shouldn't have to do much in that for a regular reminder of the year. Roosevelt Harris Water Purpose Center has a cash balance of eighty-four hundred dollars. You can see program money year-to-date, grant funds, eighty-seven thousand. The general fund has subsidized sixty-nine, sixty-nine thousand five hundred year-to-date. And we've had program income of eleven thousand dollars. Expenditures year-to-date, one hundred and fifty-three thousand. Community Development, Jack, there is some recapture funds and, uh, there's a cash balance there of thirty thousand dollars. And we also have Community Development Federal Fund, it's also a recapture fund, has a cash balance of sixty-eight hundred dollars. The expenditures out of that fund have been so far this year for the elderly disabled program, approximately six thousand dollars. And about five thousand dollars for volunteer groups that came in during the summer, get our expenditures for for the. Stop, so recapture, so we got a cash balance of forty-five thousand, three fifty, so actually it's a little bit forty-two thousand. Actually forty-five thousand there. And we know expenditures made during the month of December. And, um, as I mentioned before, I think it's the last, last month, we had a big contribution to the East Street landfill, which brought that fund on down. North Street Commons, still have a cash balance of three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. There have been no funds expended at, or millions expended out of that fund so far from this fiscal year. Sanitation fund, see, year-to-date, six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in income. Our revenue is the base of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in expenditures. And a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars of operating income. So cash balance of that fund is one, a little over a million dollars. Because we've already received majority of property tax buildings that have come in from those cities, which are for two thousand sixteen services. Restored cash back fund, still we have the two hundred and two thousand dollars in sale equipment in the prior fiscal year. Additional information, no downwind control expenses. Uh, there's a hundred and twelve dollars on traffic control expenses for year-to-date, total of seventeen hundred dollars there. Waste management deals for the month, but they've been always made in December, have stayed in line, basically with what they are. Most every month, you'll see, I guess, the significant money is that illegal refuse to give up. So far this year, we've made out twenty-seven thousand dollars in money for that. That's just some of the state waste management. That doesn't include what the actual city is actually picking up, um, on its own for illegals. Uh, neighborhood community services, that's all the expenses for the month. We've had the neighborhood community department, which is basically the Roosevelt Lard Center, basically this is a very big expenses. The only other things that's missing is that came out of that, um, division in general fund. Which you will see that we had athletic subsidies, which we paid to win down, total of two thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars during the month of December.
Is that kind of high in the month of December?
Well, that, that's year-to-date.
Oh.
That's, that's the only amount we paid also for.
Are tipping fees included in illegal refuse cleanup number? Where are the tipping charges?
Well, it depends on what, yeah, it, it is if it's for the illegal refuse.
Okay.
Questions for Ms. Mills, Commissioner? Um, Ms. Mills, I want to tell you, uh, thank you for getting information to me about loss, um, a history of our loss payments. And, and to date, the city, since we went down to thirty-five percent, down to twenty-seven percent. We have admitted our citizens' loss, losses, loss, uh.
A reduction.
We've adjusted four million dollars to our, our budget. However, we move on and we move gracefully and speedily. And I have one question, uh, for you concerning, uh, Rosa Harris, what person?
Yes.
So six nine thousand dollars been transferred from general fund to fund that?
Yes.
That's money that you're not getting from camera to fund that, what, right, that money we have?
That's money that we have to put over there to keep the.
All right, okay. So I have, any other questions, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner? There being the, I'm gonna pay the motion.
I can answer you, but we're into the financial report as of December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, as presented.
Motion, second for the approval, second of the financial report for December thirty-first, uh, fifteen, uh, there's further discussion. Here and now, all those paid at this way, arriving. All right, I'm open carry. Thank you so much, Ms. Mills. Um, we're getting down, we're looking down our agenda, we're down to our city attorney, item number ten. Still, alcohol license for Sunday sales, private, broken lives, seven point five.
These are your commissioners for the last city road meetings, uh, particular alcohol license to discuss, approved for sale for on purpose consumption of alcohol. However, there were no Sunday sale approved. And at that time, I was directed to conduct additional research, uh, and I've done so. Put a letter, I believe, for the, uh, we have an additional letter, so we can deliver it to five of our representatives there, uh, there in the audience. Um, in my letter, essentially, I, under research and, and prior, uh, then, the city of Brunswick passed a referendum allowing Sunday sales for on purpose consumption in restaurants deriving at least fifty percent of their sales from food, or hotels, or motels also deriving at least fifty percent of their total gross income from rental rooms. That is essentially the only two types of Sunday sales licenses that the city's authorized to, uh, do out for, you know, on purpose consumption of alcohol on Sunday. Um, in addition to the research, I did, I've often contacted Department of Revenue, Alcohol Backlight Agents, the local agent, wasn't that Ron, it's now Ronald Darby. I've talked to him on a couple of things, root pubs, browsers, those types of things. Attached to the third page of your letter, provided mail, correspondence with, uh, Agent Darby, and he again confirms that the, uh, local sort of city to issue on purpose consumption of Sunday sale licenses, it's related to what is in our offering, and essentially what is in our perp code. And it's, you know, it's not, uh, like, obviously, which would more, did, or there wasn't exemption out there. Still encourage them, I know that they have nonprofit status, and I've included my letter saying, saying that there are other options, special advantage permits that they may be able to afford to say, uh, Department of Revenue, to be able to sell Sunday, uh, alcohol on Sundays. But we're looking to what our laws state and what, what the state allows.
So in other words, they are fine, unless they only apply to, they need a license taken.
Not necessarily, no. And I say that in my letter, I'm finished. I'm your lawyer, given you all my research, uh, suggests that if they wanted to go out and get their own local counsel, they might pursue that. There is the ability to go to the state, uh, as a nonprofit to seek out special advantage permits. And there's a limit on how many you can have a year, and there may be other requirements that they want to do with the state. Uh, and they ultimately prohibited from doing that if they have a license authorized. So I would, you know, I would encourage them to go pursue that if there's something that goes on there.
Then, so, um. We have to follow our orders, because our orders say, and our orders follow the state, what the state says. Uh, and the state provides a decision, yes or no to them, they have to follow that themselves and find that out.
And I, and I asked the, the Department of Revenue agent specifically, fraternal organization, uh, which I believe that they would follow based on the definition of Department of Revenue regulation. Is there, do they have exemption from Department of Revenue? Is there something that they allow, when they allow fraternal organization to be exempt from, from seeking out Sunday sale license? And, uh, although sure, it seems to be Agent Darby's response is no, it's only based on like a reference in the states.
So, Wesley, you've given us, uh, a legal point, and, uh, have, have a cry, have we had, um, laws applied for Sunday sales? Yes, or you don't know any?
Yeah.
They could apply with their alcohol license.
I thought that when we ran that, we approved that, uh, some, some sales.
It's all in, it's all in. And I, I believe we presented a check, I'm, I'm not sure.
So I'm asking, did they apply for Sunday sales?
Yeah.
If they can, I can give you the clarification, because the, uh, suggestion might be possible.
And I wouldn't be appropriate for the, 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 in front of the, of the, the marshal, to bring that up.
Sure.
I just have to inform you of what the research should have.
Okay.
If there's any of those.
This name, and, and, referendum, state, state law, it's referendum of the county. Referendum came concerning Sunday sales.
It's, it's been on the books quite a bit, and it's, it's everyone being, being audited, uh, and asked to open up books to show the percentage of either sales from rental rooms or, uh, food product. That's what I have to do.
So you, you have sent down to, to lodge?
I have, here, uh, I have the first one, for this work, uh, we have it. I, I have, uh, I think you presented the, uh, what you sent out, the Attorney General opinion from two thousand and two. I believe Mr. Cook, you have a top order, uh, copy of the Attorney General opinion discussing the sale of alcohol at Bonafide Private Clubs in the state of, I mean, state of Georgia. Uh, I drafted an email, and you all will be referring to that, of the Attorney General opinion. That was discussed a year ago as well. Bonafide Private Clubs are a very specific, uh, section of, of, you know, alcohol code. The city, we've had to go on the special referendum, specifically authorizing the sale of Bonafide Private Clubs. Uh, I went through all the minutes a year ago, and there was no such referendum passed, uh, that allowed that. Bonafide Private Clubs essentially deals with dry counties in the winter of Georgia, where they pass a referendum allowing certain Bonafide Private Clubs to serve alcohol. Uh, and in doing so, those specific Bonafide Private Clubs are exempt from Sunday sales. City legislature is not asked for it. The city legislature utilized a different method of authorizing Sunday sales in the city. And in doing so, they authorize Sunday sales in the restaurants and the restaurants.
Could you go check on the city's, or, or, in, 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 uh?
Since that was also discussed, uh, you want to review the Sunday sale co-section in state of Georgia. They're very specific, they do offer a Sunday sale in a city or county. Majority of the time, it's based on population, and sometimes the population, say, there's a window of about a hundred people versus a window of several thousand. Meaning, you can pass Sunday sales in your county if your population is sixty-five thousand three hundred and fifty, and between sixty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-one, based on census. So, you know, if you compare it to other jurisdictions, you can really compare, compare it to one county where it's essentially the same. The county will be bound by a population requirement for Sunday sales.
Any questions for our Attorney?
So basically, from what I'm hearing, what you said, only with it, basically, you have to have a special for the, 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 basically, to see.
Unless they chose to not charge for a group, but they rolled some, rolled some cost into their membership, is correct, then we have that discussion.
That is a portion of discussion, and that's kind of why I included the letter, saying that you have special options of nonprofit. You allow that, see, they're having, attempting to serve alcohol on Sunday. Um, but to your question, the city, I think, has already authorized sale of alcohol on Sundays, and via referendum, the, 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 the question. If one is looking to authorize the Bonafide Private Clubs, that's included, so you can look into, require a special election, city voters, they put on. I would caution that even then, Bonafide Private Clubs must meet certain requirements set for by the statute. And I think this was discussed a year ago, too, that some of those requirements, and, and my, my talking, um, that those requirements, some of them are called, uh, are efficient. And staff, there, there are various, there, that even if we did, um, go through the referendum on how to Bonafide Private Clubs to sell alcohol on Sundays, which will make you barriers there.
I had to just, I realized that we are, we use the same, uh, referendum code that Glen County uses. And I know they have other lodges in Glen County as well. And one of their mayhap issues, it seemed to be, the only issue came up, came up with us. I, I kind of can't figure out why it came up to us about all of Glen County. And Glen County is using, we do the same stat they're using, and why isn't it part of the sale then, as well? I can't do that, anyway.
I mean, I, um, you know, what's included in my letter is what the city's authorized to.
I'm saying, I'm saying, you're able to, it's supposed to, I'm trying to not do that.
And if Glen County's allowing it, and they may be allowing it by, I don't know. Talk to me in a second.
Any questions for our Attorney? Not okay, all right, um, please.
I'm here to, uh, to, uh, of Sunday sales.
Okay, sir, I appreciate, uh, you having to add to, to where we are with all this, and before we, uh, come to the city. Okay, thanks. Uh, in light of, uh, Mr. Williams, a lot of getting their letter, uh, today, and also, uh, um, I know we got information from our city attorney. Commissioner, all, we, I don't think we have, uh, information to go on this, and I think it's misinformation.
Yes, I didn't, I didn't bring the license before, yes, I was.
All right. All right. So, if you have anything to add, Mr. Williams, uh, please do so. If not, then we will, uh, dismiss the side attorney until, until we bring it back to you. Until we decide to, until our attorney, our partner, bring it back to you, or prove of illegal Sunday sale and not the success. At, at a point, right now, we just do not, we, we got some information for our city attorney, that's what we have. You got to give it to us, and give it to you, uh, we're gonna digest it, and then we'll work with you. Sorry it's taking, it takes so long, but to do all this, but, uh, that is possible, you must go through.
Okay.
You got other information to, to give us, please do so.
I think we already got it.
Yes. Probably next to me, with, uh, Mark. I understand. Hopefully, it does not, so we can be returned. And sir. All right, this item is, uh. This item is a clue of Westport, April, when I had the last ride vocal, to permit vocal tours in the city cemetery.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to correct that title of that item, it, it refers to the applicant as the best of our ghost tours. And they're also, uh, represented as historical town tours. Specifically, it does say those tours, if they're looking to do their historic tours, like that, that, that's a true. Like that, that was my first presentation, and I worked, uh, not requesting specifically to have those tours in the cemetery as historic. In November, um, the request came to me, and I, I presented to the city commission. My department as the city manager was, was requesting to have tours in the cemetery, as the current cemetery code is not addressed. Um, in most cases, if there were to allow cemetery tours, there would be a section on it how it would be conducted, or if they were restricted, it said that there's a ground rules not allowed, or there's a restriction of cemetery tours. So not being addressed, by the turn of the point, in the policy, that comes before we do a head-on thing. Since we had a request to have tours, to clarify what we should do. Director from the commission at that time was saying, not whether we should have tours or not have tours, but what would it be, what would it look like, what would our tour permitting system look like? If we were to go forward with tours? And so that was my assignment, uh, did some research for some cities, I went to Savannah, I went to Charleston, I went to Austin. I don't think a number of cities did not, uh, allow that, because it was strictly saying that the tours were, uh, not allowed. They were allowed, they were not allowed by historic societies, groups such as that. And it varies from maybe the community, or what group might be allowed to do that. So, uh, those were the options I saw. Uh, since my assignment specifically was, what would it be if we had, or how could it be? And obviously, if we were to place it, we would put it in a formal ordinance, and we would actually have much detail to it. That's not why I compared it to that with ordinance, and hence, that's not the action to go forward to say it's approved or not approved. Tonight, I'm looking for the policy direction, do I draft that, or does the city attorney go forward with the permit? And we got to do that, too. Whether the city, how they're coming to record, if it's, were to say, uh, you did not want to go that direction, then we would draft it, or we're staying policy is not to do that, do that way. So, to, to clarify. There is not one way you can do this. I, I've found that, uh, very similar to Runz River, our, our neighbor to the north, the city of Savannah, has done a very detailed, uh, and a good job of putting the permit together. Though we find it rather much of, uh, staff that wants to, a lot of work to do, to do the permit. Uh, they permit, uh, very frequently, they, they can actually permit for a one-time tour. You can come in, play the permit, have one tour, as restrictions, whether it's fifteen people, thirty people, it's got very detailed, pretty staff intensive. So my recommendation is not to do that, well. So, uh, I, I would very happily, that's why I'm attached into this, lean on the city of Savannah's rules and regulations, which I think are very detailed and very perfect to the city council. So let's look at some of the things that we've put in place as a city council, or people are to, the orders that allow Sunday sales. First off, the cemetery tour permits may be issued to licensed historic tour companies, wishing to enter one, two, or three of the city-owned cemeteries. Uh, we suggest that be valid for three calendar days for native issue, very similar to one of the options in the city of Savannah. The permits are issued, and fees would be charged by, by the cemetery, by the ancient cemetery. And the number of tours is during that thirty days. Potentially, a one-foot permit would accept that place, a copy of the city of Savannah, that would be a hundred and fifty dollars per cemetery. Uh, or all free, and the city of Savannah actually charges two fifty for three cemeteries, but I suggested they not take the three hundred. Uh, each tour is limited to fifteen people. City of Savannah doesn't allow larger tours, it'll be thirty people, and they're taking full commercial buses. I don't think that's appropriate for the city of Runz River, so I would suggest that if you were developing laws that would allow such a large tour, I think that would take really, 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 uh, much time to do. I did indicate by the city of Savannah, that the tours could be booked seven days a week. The hours are nine a.m. to dawn, with the city of Savannah, it has specific times. By the summer time, when the sun's up later, you can probably go out a little later. And lunchtime, when the sun goes down at five thirty, you probably shouldn't be out there, maybe not five thirty. So that's my objection, and then. Tour companies must hold city permits for insurance claims resulting out of tours. A half valid, then a liability insurance, and now, yet to be determined. Uh, tour companies are responsible for any damage prior to the involved monuments, financing, other property, or other crews, upon the loss of the result from the tour. Uh, tour guides, again, following the, according to Savannah, must be certified by the city. We would look at historic history knowledge, if they're looking to, to do the tour, the regulation knowledge, just to ensure tour guides are affiliated with the city rules and regulations, if they're being sourced. We would check the driver's license, and make sure that they have insurance. The certification would be for a six-month period, and if you have to cover our costs, we suggest that tours that would be part of the ordinance, would be about a cost of seventy-five dollars. The guides would be prohibited from attempting to sensationalize the tours, if also, both places, bleeding statues. Uh, the guides would not wear Halloween stuff, costumes, may not reference ghosts, and ghouls, and vampires, or any other mythical creatures of, like, the, of the occult. So we're being careful to make sure we're being respectful of who wants to do the stuff to tour. The vehicles used for the tours must be properly enhanced, to make sure that they're not decorated or marketed in fashion, with disrespect to such, such stuff first, or have Halloween theme, or a marketing element that indicated they are tourists, tours, or local tours, such as that. They would not be permitted in vehicle traffic, when we were subject, obviously, it's the pathways were built back in the days when you had wagons, horses, not even the animal vehicle, or you would have to be on foot to tour the cemetery. Tours are not permitted two hours before, or three hours after a funeral. Any scheduled tours during such time can be canceled. Tour company must check with the Department of Public Works Cemetery, and obviously, before a re-tour, to be cleared to proceed, which would then be documented by the, the office. Permits will be issued with city manager's office, in violation of the policies of cemetery, uh, he will call suspension, or vacation, or private by the city manager. And then, then I refer back to the city of Savannah, or somebody over there, called the original relation, which they have placed. Also, and they talk about after-hours tours, which I, I would not necessarily recommend, based on the fact that the many licenses that we have, and there are cemeteries all free. Uh, some of which would suffer minor, sort of frail, uh, construction, so I would think after a bunch of, of sense, we're really trying to get a feel of the history of the cemetery. The city still, I'm wondering, that's much better than the day. The, uh, and again, Savannah has a part in the relation to restaurants, so we may address that, and we want to incorporate in our ordinance, if we will, before. I mean, I have some questions in details, and I didn't write the order specifically, because I, I was not technically my sign up. And we incorporate, uh, help the city attorney's office, and then we can, uh, so. Questions on how we manage this program for you, if you're forward?
Question for, um, our city manager. Uh, his, uh, proposed, uh, ordinance, I guess, would be.
No, no, it's really my sign up.
Well, this is a question for what he says, though, basically, if, 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 what, if I'm alive, I ask on prison. He won't afford that.
Do you want to, I agree with you, as my proposal, I'm actually, it's asked in the policy direction. You would ask, as a commission, what would it look like if you were to before the permit process? This is what I'm recommending, if you were to before.
Right.
Not really, in fact, one of the, um, standing by, really.
Right, you just put me.
I, I really believe it's a stipulation. A standard for the community of one set, what you feel would be acceptable for your community. And some communities, some communities, tours, some communities, some of them said, obviously, they would have done that, and I think that's not an issue. Other communities, they might, but it's not, and I know it's really the question on the table tonight, and there's a lot of interest on both sides of the issue. And I'm sure even a lot of people like speaking about, uh.
That's true. Any questions for, and then?
I'm, I'm just curious, if you, uh, scratches, I have like this on page two, or two.
The highlighting, the highlighting is a thing, so to show you where it came from, really, is how, uh, I think, I was expecting it to be why that much money, or why that little money, whichever way it was, and I was using the reference, so it would be, uh, wasn't really scratched out, it's highlighted, it's the copy machine, the copies are, uh, it's primarily small vehicle tours, fifteen people, up to a hundred and fifty dollars, and it shows, and also walking tours, pay the same as a vehicle tour. So, fifteen passengers, in so that respect, um, knowing that it would have to be a riding tour, uh, that's why we are basically presenting this. Not food, but we're doing, going through like, vehicles, because the city of Savannah, you do have roads, right? But in case, for, if you're a rock, or you're a city, it could be the same. I guess another thing to add, we do have, I don't believe, we, we always, uh, society, that's correct, turn the thing in. The, uh, that, we need, we're moving forward, we have to, and now, the current, some of you, we have to, because I think at that point, currently, in case they're going to, uh, uh, cemetery. Or you could choose to send that cemetery, not hardly, but hardly, you choose to go for it.
Okay. Question, um, in the, uh, to the last paragraph, the tours could not commit to alcohol before, before, after, you know, any scheduled tours, in which times, you can't, so tour company must check with the Department of Works, uh.
Yes.
We always know the date, we don't, we don't necessarily have emergency areas, but we have someone fairly clear after, uh, in death. But we always know the date in advance, everybody has a very early next day. So if the company has scheduled tours, or has set up tours for a particular day, they just could call into the office and say, yeah, look, we have a Sunday tour, what's it look like? It's a funeral, and they would not, and they would not, then they would cancel those who reserve the spot. Or the people who might just be coming in to their office, for, for, and others not going to be touring, after this. And, and that's something that actually, uh, in fact, actually, I'm, this, this hand, you're talking about, oh, you're over there, here. We talked about that, that something, the student school, suggesting, and the concept, and that is exceeding the city of Savannah. City of Savannah, actually, if there is an active funeral, or there are any runners-up in the cemetery, the tour's supposed to try to avoid that section of the cemetery while the funeral's underway. And so the city of Savannah is not actually suspending tours during the, during the actual funerals, or the cemetery during. They just try to avoid the area.
They probably have a lot more foot traffic, just in general, in some of their, in some of their, sort of, area.
Right.
I'm sure.
We do understand that, and, and they've had this problem the past, occasionally, like, a tour, or like, or a tour guide, you know, starts to talk about something in, uh, the city during Halloween season or something, and somebody goes, there's a bunch of bleeding statues, it was an example of something that I've heard happen. And, and if, basically, you have that road, tour guide, who will live, who acts outside the regulations, the city of Savannah, if they're going to, if they're going to cancel the permit, that's been reported to the city, that's happened, and that permit's canceled, and that tour company would be suspended for a period of time, uh, because, because of that, for actually. So they're, they're supposed to, and I know we may not be talking about a large amount of tour companies, but they're, they're actually, for your, more than one, it's in Savannah.
Okay, so my question, give it back to our man, ask my question. Um, you got to declare different recommended, um, stipulations, and what they can tell to you, with the damage, and all that kind of stuff.
Yes.
So my question is a simple one. Who would govern, and how would these, um, uh, how would they be governed, to know that, they're being compliant, understand they're compliant with this? How, how would this be governed?
Well, you're right, it's, it's some, some other services that are, that are permitted down there. You, you're not watching them all the time, or potentially, you would, they're, they're, I mean, we, for example, we have building permits. We issue building permits to, not traffic, to put a roof on your house. Well, we can look and inspect with the permit, but we're not there the whole time they work. Or if there's a problem, often it's the owner of the home, or somebody that comes forward with their complaint, and we investigate. So we have someone who's on the floor, someone who witnesses this account. And we have staff in cemeteries, as, as your daytime, uh, that potentially can see a line issue, be investigated, and, uh, the company will probably issue, determine the seriousness of the, the complaint, as, I correct the office, that some of it was too serious, or we couldn't see a correction, and, and this is going to that company, or potentially, who booked the party, and then, uh, wouldn't be able to match. And then we're looking at each other, if we say that company, specifically, this company has broken, you know, you may, or.
We had to, uh, tours, tours, tour entities.
Again, you can add, I said, that's, that's.
Had to, had any that had knocked on her door, or.
No, I'm not sure if you've got any interest in.
No, I, we have.
Yeah.
Final question for the man?
So then, if, if we had had the others, could there potentially be, um, so, if we involve, uh, tours also?
For one.
Yeah, you know.
Sure.
And then, you know, if we do that, how would we limit it? Do we limit it? We, all of a sudden, we got twenty-five companies coming in and saying, we want tours.
Well, I think you could do that, and, and maybe you would wait to ask for, or you could determine. Uh, this could be set up in a separate fashion, so that we can open this, uh, part of our tours, or multiple companies, or, I mean, that's how this is, obviously. You could say that there is one or two, or exclusive contract, where you put the stipulations in, or saying, or requesting a proposal for a company to be one of our cemetery tour company, and that we would, uh, put these stipulations by contract, and, you know, all of a sudden, then, so this, I think, I think we have, remember, excuse the example, like, the, the ferry, or just, uh, company. So the other one, contract, one, one contract, and given the contract, they have to follow stipulations, and they have sole contractors for one year, two years, whatever the time of their contract is. We could do that, and have a, a contract, and one, two, in any which way our words, we would say, there would have been a number of tours. You can say, children, one tour, and two, or two, or four, breaking down, but I agree, we can say, so we can, we can, you know, we can, we can, uh, uh, uh. We think there's too many tours, or, uh, too many, too many tours, or, or, or.
Okay, um, thank you for the information, sir, I appreciate that, uh, any further questions for the man? Okay, uh, thanks.
We do have, uh, a handful.
Our red collar, please, he is now honored, he's now forward.
Uh, I have a comment on, uh, some late setter that had my insurance, and I would show my office. The first time I've seen that, if you want to, they want to see my office and my insurance.
Probably, I'm just, I'm, I apologize for what's a little proud of it, but I'm just gonna upset one. I hear people saying things that aren't true and saying that we did some, that we did some.
I have, I have put in the paper.
But we do have, we do have insurance, we can provide that to all, all of them.
But I don't think this commission is considering, uh, uh, those things that have been said to, to offend your character. I don't think we'll be able to deal with that, like that when you're looking at, uh, secrets, uh, the one of these, uh, which we don't have yet. And, and our consistency to, to make one and what would you, how, how it would affect all our citizens. We're concerned about that as well. We're concerned about also how the rounds were concerned about how, uh, we were betraying our, our cemeteries are being betrayed. And, and so that's what we are here to do, so.
Well, probably, schedule is my action.
The other part, I believe, is really still offending your character that's, you know, those residents of us.
Okay, okay. Uh, and the other thing I want to, uh, address, like I said, you know, we're not going to do one thousand. So three hundred and fifty a month is just, you know, not something that's comparable for us here, but, um.
Have, have the word was a little bit on that, at least two, because two, now, I mean, we can do three fifty a month.
We would love to, choice, we, our budget check, if we want for three hundred and fifty dollars, it's approved, because that means we got the choice to back it. But if we're doing a kid, six people a month, that's just, you know, not, not something that would be possible. And then the other thing is, yes, we totally agree, we will call the cemetery office if there's a, um, funeral in progress, we do, we're not going to be there. But to say, I mean, to say two hours before and three hours, or whatever the numbers were, you're talking about five hours. So that, that means if there's a funeral one day, that pretty much essentially means that days off. Um, so that's, that's the only question I have about that is if, if, if somebody who has hours a little bit, and hours for a while.
Commissioner, just question for, uh, for the honor.
Yeah, I wanted to ask like to ask you, and I don't know if you'd like, uh, couldn't you be fairly effective not allowing out cemeteries and notes and some pictures without asking? Going into cemeteries.
You, I could fairly accept that through that, and I would throw, and, and remember, remember, we went up a ground number recently. But Greenwood and Comer, or three thirty one, they're, I mean, you can't do that, but everybody's going forty-five, fifty months out.
Is that ninety, seventy-five?
No, I, I would have, I mean, we would pass those cemeteries in sixty seconds, and I would be good until one story gone. In sixty seconds, from that first one.
Uh, something that, that I really have not thought about, uh, and hadn't hit me until just recently is, is that we had a person here that was our city rep. And, uh, he's somebody that was sitting here. I don't know if I was discussing him, but I was probably a thing in history or anything, you know, anyway. I had no idea until somebody was an employee of the city council took their time to come to me and tell me that this person would go out and lay next to his wife in a cemetery and just did that for years and years and years. I had no idea, I would have been, and that is it, that this is what we're talking about is commercializing somebody's emotional state out there. And that's why it is so much here, the involvement is up here from this commission and the rest of the community.
Oh, and I.
This, this is not a large city, it's, it's a very small city, and, and it's a very personal city, and, and it's one that has a great deal of, obviously. And, and that's why I, I, I think of, of this person every time I sparred or review this thing, and, and I think about how that, I know what he would have told me, but I'm not going to tell you the same blood, it would have been very right, you know, it really would have been. Uh, I was fair, public, of what I would have gotten, had, had I known to interrupt somebody that is trying to, to be with their wife or their family members deceased, and that's, that's somebody that I think is like this, that, uh, we don't have an idea of how many people are in our cemeteries will this date in, and we probably don't know. There's where we may need to be with their family and their loved ones. And, and that's, this is a, this is a predictive document, and it's, I, I can't see it in, in any shape, form, or match, and in Johnny Kane's makeup, to where he would offer to, to form a minimum, that's, and that's, that's hard, hey, it would be, it really is.
And I must admit that, I mean, either, okay, so what you're saying is there may not be funeral partners, but some of you are funeral. I, I would.
You never have an idea.
Well, the question is, I mean, the great, I mean, the great.
That's just the point, you might not, and people are out there, and, and again, this came to me, I never saw. I, I spend as much time in cemeteries as anybody that's, that's been in town before, and all three of us in here. And, uh, people go out there and they don't want to have people sensationalized. What's going on there? Because that's what this commission is asking us to do, and it's nothing that we can't do. I mean, it's not something that we can prove.
I mean, when I think about sensationalize, and I'm thinking about things that we're not about, and like I said, we're about relating history. And, and like I said, if we see somebody and they're even standing there, they're out there putting their flowers, or, 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 we could, we could have somebody for there. We could have a sense, we could have enough stuff that we could go past that, not disturb them.
Here, here, boy, I, I see that, I see that, if, if those folks are out there in their seats, their corporate, your, your, they've still got living relatives right here. That's the closeness and the smallness in our city, and, uh.
Well, and I know letters were sent out to descendants of all, um, of the cemeteries, of, of cemeteries, and I, I saw three letters to the other three. That's like two one hundredths of a percent of the population of our history. So I would, and, you know, the letter asked, urged them to let down, you know, that there was this, so that's not a whole lot of those citizens and families that seem to be concerned.
There was, there were a number of people who were against, a number of people signed petitions, uh, against it, uh, uh, and I, I think maybe they didn't realize or haven't really talked to you all to find out exactly what you all stand for either.
Well, one thing about that petition, the letter is, it was based on false information that was given to them. That's why some of the letters said, come against those tours, not those tours.
Do you, do you clear that out?
That's why I, I vote for.
I'm not, I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Also to your representative, that's not where you are taking coming from, I, I, I feel that's not what you're, you know, that's not where I'm coming from, not at all. But we do have to represent the folks in this town and, and what those folks want in their cemeteries.
I'd be saying I'm not going to have to, I'm not going to base their opinion on the fall of original tours. And, uh, in fact, we have got this, if that's what, if that's what's where.
But, you know, I think of all the opportunities that there are to pull tourism, especially heritage tourism into our community. This doesn't really get along a lot, even notwithstanding what, what your sensitivity might be, uh, with what you're going to portray. If you came before us and wanted to do bird, birding expedition out there, some rare bird, I would still have a very difficult time with that. So I, I think that we, we have worked a lot, um, folks within the community, and it's, it's, it's very difficult to think about opening up this proposition.
Well, I guess I would say that, you know, telling the story of people who are in the cemeteries is offensive. Then it goes back to what I said, then if, if they went towards the cemetery, and what should we do, then that should be the rule.
But I, I don't think, I don't think that we're saying that, uh, this commission is to tell this story apart, I think, or we're considering, that, that's what. And I realize that, one, our cemetery, uh, kind of told you to drive around the boundary, and, and the other two cannot, so it just doesn't have the way it's laid out. So, so we, we are here to consider allowing commercialism, uh, going through our cemetery, our two other cemeteries. That, that's what, what we're here to, to decide, and realize that you are, you saying that you are not, uh, be, uh, you know, be aware of people's feelings or whatever, and others saying that, you, well, you really don't know, you don't know about some side of the person, you don't know some side of the person, person's mind, how, how they're taking, how they're taking offense or something. I always say, a person writes in, but another forgets, so, uh, and, and in that aspect, that's, that's what we could have to try to look out for, the betterment of all the citizens. And, uh, as our city manager has posed, uh, put together some stipulations that we decided by the ordinance, uh, about it, uh, we will think we would have to consider to. Not that we will try to raise prices so to force you out of the business, but we want to make sure that, that people coming in are legit and so forth like that. So, you know, it may be nothing against you, it's just that, uh, we're looking at our future as well, and, and we want to always honor our followers, that's one thing we always do. So, we are here, commissioners, and, uh, and if, I realize we just got this information tonight, uh, we can't, uh, we can't, we can either decide tonight or we can, uh, look at information, especially with stipulation that our city manager provided to us just recently. Uh, if you want to do a permit, I mean, do a ordinance or do a, uh, permit process, or you want to consider the permit process, or you want to consider altering the process. So, you know, if, if you feel you don't have enough information yet, or have an objection yet, and, uh, if, if that means you can defer this, or you can, uh, for the discussion, or you can make a decision right now, I'm, I'm open for any.
Are you looking for consensus about what's, what's the problem?
I, I don't look for direction, and if the commission would like to move forward with the concept of permitting, then we would go back and revert to the, to allow the ordinance. If that were the case, we would look at the fee situation that was mentioned tonight, and maybe the city's command of a thirty-five dollar tour. And that, that could be done, that would be, you know, most likely be looked at as a draft ordinance. Hit the commission's direction, if you don't want to move in that direction, permit, and you know that's not the desire, do that, that, have that direction, get back and consider additional cemeterial relations, so it's not, not.
Well, also, I think we need to decide whether we will allow commercial vehicles to go through cemeteries, I think that's what the whole.
Well, I think it's still a commercial vehicle, and we can come back and, and still be permitting, but then a vehicle could be issued with a ordinance, that's all the issue.
You know, is it walking tours we are concerned about, or are we concerned about tours itself, or are we concerned about vehicles going through, yeah, or what, what are?
I, I think the main issue is tours, at this point, commercial tours, and if there is a desire to have commercial tours, then it should be permitted. And that would be then those other stipulations, we park the ordinance, so, uh, commercial tours, and then you could, the stipulation can be a vehicle, can not be a vehicle, if there is a sign, it can be. If you're not going to have any tours, uh, that are commercial tours, then we could always say that not the office doors or tours, to do that, because you've already done that in your MOU, you could go.
Well, exactly right, we have a lot of road to do.
Through an MOU, not through, not through permitting.
I, I understand that.
Then we could get a commercial, and that's why we need to see this man, and so that's really key, if you want a lot of commercial tours, or so, we really should be permitting the program. Uh, if not, then we could stipulate that they're not, not, and so there you go.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If we could direct staff to give us a, some type of draft of ordinance that we can review, and then make a decision from that point, based upon how, how, you know, how we can possibly make it work if we can, if we can.
Well, if you were requested to say that you are unable to do that ordinance, certainly, yes, I don't, after that, that's a lot of, that's a lot of pressure to, to take. I mean, that's your will, that's mine.
I, I can't, I just direct staff to move forward with tours, uh, letters, vehicle, um, private walking tours, I just, I'm not, I'm not for that.
No, because I don't think we were necessarily, I think it just, it's all.
Yeah, yeah, that's already, it's, it's in effect, so that doesn't need to be amended unless you want to stop, and having to be coming back, and otherwise, this is already a mission.
And you talk to non-criminals.
It's non-criminals, it's not.
Well, the, the issue was doing tours in the same, in the same cemetery.
Look, my issue is, if we're not, nobody should be around.
Well, I think there'll be difference between the commercial aspect and the aspect of giving, whatever, from the act of the cemetery, and I think that is different game. And obviously, I don't use the court, uh, discussion, uh, pad, and, and I don't order one of the, for the venue, and, uh.
Well, what are the four charges that we, we charge the town for the last one, minus our, for making this a cemetery?
Certainly, there's a murder piece to go back to.